May 9th, at the Cus Middle School. On school choice, I believe it is, Deb, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Aguirre.
Here.
Mr. Bailey. Mr. Harp.
Here.
Ms. Larvee. Here. Ms. Pereira. Ms. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mayor Coogan.
Before we do the salute to the flag, I'd like to acknowledge that Mr. Aguirre is joining us virtually. Salute to the flag, please. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Citizens input? We have none for this part of the meeting. School choice, out of district students in grades six to twelve for 2022-2023 school year. Any discussion of people that wish to speak on school choice for out of district students in grades six through twelve for 22-23 school year? Again, school choice for out of district students in grades six to twelve for 2023 school year. Hearing none? Next item, school choice for non-resident students in grades K-5 for the four of public school employees consistent with the collective bargaining agreement for the 22-23 school year. Any discussion on that provision? Again, that's the school choice for non-resident students in grades K to five for the four of public school employees consistent with the collective bargaining agreement for the 22-23 school year. And finally, I'll say it for the last time. Any discussion on school choice for non-resident students in grades K to five for the four of public school employees consistent with the collective bargaining agreement for 22-23 school year? Hearing none? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Aguirre.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Harp.
Yes.
Ms. Larvee.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira. Ms. Rodriguez. Mayor Coogan.
Yes. School choice hearing is adjourned. I'd like to call to order the May 9th regular meeting of the Farver School Committee. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre.
Here.
Mr. Bailey.
Here.
Mr. Harp.
Here.
Ms. Larvee.
Here.
Ms. Pereira. Ms. Rodriguez.
Here.
Mayor Coogan.
Here. Salute to the flag. One quick announcement, Mr. Aguirre will be joining us virtually tonight. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Do we have any citizens input? We do. First up is Jeffrey Gendrow from Palmer Street in Fall River.
Hello, members of the Farver School Committee. I am writing today in regards to the issues. The school committee and your mayor recently received a cease and desist letter from the East Coast law firm Friedman, Frame, and Thrush. Attorney Travis Parker. That is because Mr. Coogan was once again censoring city residents such as Colin Dias in an effort to suppress information. What kind of elected official, never mind the mayor of our great city, would censor city residents, violate the First Amendment and the rule of law? Mr. Coogan, why are you censoring certain residents? Not only is this a huge issue of trust, this kind of action is also dangerous. Using your official power to silence city residents is terrible. It makes me question what else you would use your official power for that's unethical. I also have learned that other school committee members have no idea when citizens' inputs are censored or not. The school committee should be provided any proposed censored letters so that they can question any unethical censoring. Because now we know, don't be sneaky and use power for unethical purposes. The last thing this school district needs is another lawsuit over something that can be easily avoided. I respect you, Paul, but please stop censoring people and violating the law. Thank you. Jeffrey Gendrow, 229 Palmer Street.
Next up, Nelson Vasquez, Sunset Hill, Fall River.
Good afternoon, school committee. It appears there's a vote this evening about transferring ESER funds to the city side. Haven't we all, haven't we learned already from Paul's Coogonomics theory in regard to spending? That theory only means spending money without any real plan to make it up and let the dominoes fall. Why should the taxpayers foot the bill for his reckless spending habits in this manner again? They should never, and it's an outrage that he's seeking a bailout. Allow me to turn your attention to what happened last year during budget season. When the budget was being finalized, he told the city, "There's work to do, and we have some problems. We'll get it back to them." In this world, your word is bond, and Paul doesn't know a damn thing about keeping his word. In addition, he mentioned after passage of his ambush budget that he would always keep the taxpayers a priority. After jamming down his budget that violated the city's salary ordinance last year, his actions spoke louder than his words on that day. With structural deficits looming, taxes going up again, combined with his outrageous pay increases, all of that will create an even more bigger debt problem very soon. The Coogonomics theory will only bring the city of Fall River and Coogonomics recession once his scratch ticket, a ARPA, money runs dry. In conclusion, I urge this committee to keep the deceiver-in-chief in line and disapprove this transfer. If the city was so flush like he says during a joint meeting, why is he asking you to bail him out? Think again, think about that as you decide on this vote. One more thing, to the residents of Fall River, I have a message for you. Now that Paul has been out, has been put on notice again about censorship, don't be afraid to speak your mind. Nelson Vasquez, 210 Sunset Hill.
Next up, Gabriel Amaral, Indian Town Road, Fall River.
Good afternoon, school committee members. Please keep in mind the taxpayers of this great city when discussing the allocation of ESER funds to pay for the city's transportation budget. We do not want any more structural deficits. The taxpayers definitely deserve better. Also, why are we making cuts to the school budget to fund this transportation attempt? That is not what our students deserve. I hope the school committee fully vets this proposal. Lastly, in regards to the school committee's recent letter they received from a law firm Friedman, Frame, and Thrush, please show full respect and dignity to our Constitution and the First Amendment right to free speech. No more censorship. Thank you for your time, Gabriel Amaral, 901 Indian Road, Fall River, Mass.
Next, we have Sheila Dias, Ray Street, Fall River.
To the Farver School Committee, I do not agree with taking already allocated ESER funds out of the school committee budget. The plan is to use these one-time monies to pay for transportation budget. Why is the mayor asking for a bailout from the school committee if the city is in great fiscal shape? I am concerned we are setting up for a structural deficit. Also, why are we censoring citizens' input of our residents illegally? They recently received a cease and desist letter. We should no longer censor city residents. This has been happening for some time now. When will the school committee support citizens' input? Thank you. Sheila Dias, 560 Ray Street.
Next, we have Marcy Itkin, Mohawk Drive, Fall River.
Good afternoon, honorable members of the Farver School Committee. I am deeply concerned of the mayor's proposal to allocate one-time monies, ESER funds, out of an already approved budget and move them to pay for transportation on a temporary basis. This move not only hurts the school department by making cuts from their budget, but also can cause great harm to the city by creating a structural deficit. This is the last thing our taxpayers deserve. I respectfully ask that you deny this proposal and discuss other options. Thank you for reading my citizens' input. Mary Itkin, 620 Mohawk Drive.
Next, Colin Dias, Ray Street, Fall River.
Thank you, members of the school committee. And again, I think all the previous citizens' inputs, they speak for themselves. Again, I speak to you today on two separate issues. First, it was just discussed, and we should all know now, that the mayor and the school committee were sent a cease and desist order for, once again, censoring citizens' input. And as the other citizens' inputs have mentioned, we need elected officials who show respect for the Constitution and the rule of law. The mayor needs to stop silencing people he doesn't agree with, misusing his authority. And the school committee needs to hold him accountable when he does sneaky actions like this, like what he did. The only person who should be censored for their actions is you, Mr. Mayor. At the last meeting, I was myself appalled, like many in the city were, that you disrespected a school committee member that was asking pertinent questions that relate to the taxpayers of this community. And quite frankly, how dare you, Mr. Mayor, shun off questions that relate to the finances of this community? I don't support your plan to move one-time monies from the school department to temporarily fund your transportation budget. What good does that do for the everyday teacher, the student, the paraprofessional, the kitchen staff, the custodians, and everyone who makes this school district great? What good does that do for the taxpayers that you're going to create a fiscal deficit that we have to make up for years to come? This mayor told us the city is in great fiscal shape. We're not in great fiscal shape. That's why this mayor wants to bail out from the school committee using their dollars. To do what? He wants to create a structural deficit in the budget, increase in the structural deficits that we already have in our five-year fiscal forecast. And as another citizen's input said, it's typical Coogonomics. Create a structural deficit. Fix that by raising taxes two and a half percent, add-on fees, debt exclusions, and give your friends and supporter increases, and put the taxpayers last. I think the mayor underestimated the resilience and the wet of this city. The residents will no longer, at least I hope, will no longer allow this fiscal management to take place now that they know what is going on. And I think we're at a point, and I really think the city's at a crossroads, where we really need to plan for the long-term outcome of the finances of the city. And that includes proper management and accountability of our ARPA funds and our ESER funds and the budget in general. And thank you for your time.
I'd like to entertain a motion so that Keith Michon could speak.
Motion to waive the rules.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Deb, call the roll, please.
Mr. Aguirre.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Harp.
Yes.
Ms. Larvee.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira. Ms. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. Mr. Michon.
Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to take a moment to speak about the fair share amendment, which would be on the ballot this November. You may have seen Rebecca Cusick and Jim Pimental speak on this topic at the city council last month, which resulted in the council adopting a resolution to support this amendment. Tonight, I'm asking this committee to do the same. As you know, the state passed the Student Opportunity Act, revising the old school funding formula, significantly increasing funding for districts like Fall River. This will greatly benefit our students as we create more opportunities for pre-K, lower class sizes, more support staff, and scaling up with the many great opportunities that already exist in our schools. There is a lot to love about the SOA, but one question remains: How will the state afford it? The state's education budget is largely funded with state income tax money. Over the past 20 years, the state income tax rate has declined from nearly 6% to 5%, where it is now. I think everyone would agree that they don't want to see that return to 6%. The proposed amendment would create an additional 4% tax on all income above $1 million, which would specifically be used for education and public transportation. It's projected that this would raise an additional $2 billion for the state. So if you make less than $1 million, you won't see any change in your tax bill. How is this fair? You've heard many times that fair is not equal. The students deserve opportunities that this will create, and the community deserves improved public transportation. I know people earning lower wages can't afford even a small increase right now. It's hard for me to relate to someone that earns over $1 million, but I think it's safe to say that they can afford an additional 4 cents on every dollar they earn over $1 million. I hope you will join us in supporting the FSR. Thank you.
That concludes citizens' input. Attorney Assad?
Yes. I'd just like to mention one point that has been brought up at citizens' input, and that is that there was a cease and desist letter with respect to statements that were made or not made during citizens' input time. There were no, there was no letter, no cease and desist letter. A letter we received came from a law firm in, from Virginia. And basically, it was not a cease and desist, but actually took into consideration the changes the school committee has made, and understood that the school committee is promoting citizens' input and the statements that are made. As a matter of fact, the letter states specifically, it was merely a reminder for the committee to continue to observe promoting citizens' input by facilitating the protection of their free speech rights. The statements that are made at citizens' input, when they're in writing, are not censored by anyone, and certainly not censored by the mayor, because the mayor doesn't see them. The actual letters come to the school department, and they're forwarded to me. I make a determination based on the case law of the state and the federal government, as well as the subject matter of the statement. There are certain statements that are made that are not within the jurisdiction of the school department. That is not something that is appropriate for citizens' input, and those statements are excluded. Other than that, if the statement is, represents something that is within the jurisdiction of the committee, the wording is appropriate, they are read in full. And with, again, once again, with respect to the mayor, it is not the mayor making that determination. It's, the determination is made by legal counsel, a recommendation to the mayor, and then it's promoted that way. So I just wanted to be clear for everyone with respect to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Subcommittee updates. Facilities and Operations, Mr. Harp.
Thank you, Mayor Coogan. Our meeting on the Facilities and Operations was held on Monday, April 25th, at the Fonzieka Elementary School in the Community Room. There are a lot of items on the agenda, and most of them were to, for discussion and vote to refer to the whole committee. The first one was the, the Farver Youth Soccer was looking for assistance with taking care of the lawns, mowing the lawn for a period of one year until they can get back up and running and being a little more sufficient. The other, the other issue, the second issue that was discussed was the facility school use. This was the second time it came in front of the Facilities and Operations Committee, and these are all going to be discussed in the committee on the whole, so that will be there as well. The other item was the labor job description that I think Ken Pacheco will bring forward in the committee on the whole. But this is to maybe possibly attract some of potentially Durfee students. And if they can't, if we can't get any Durfee students for these particular positions, then obviously we'd have to go out and outside of the school to hire somebody. The other item was the naming, renaming committee members. This was, came in front of us, this was the second time, and I think the, what happened was the, Mr. Pacheco came back with a list that looked to us to be more, a little more representative of the city. And I think that was one of the things that school committee woman Larvee suggested as well. The other issues were the Laterno School Carnival and the traffic concerns. We had the principal from Laterno and the police officer Sergeant Galveo come in to discuss with us the traffic patterns that they possibly could implement, but a lot of things have to happen before that. Like, we have to make sure that we're going to be contacting the neighborhood first and foremost. The other issues that came before us were, again, vote to refer with the solicit bid for five years for the operation management of a school food service program, and as well as solicit bids for a five-year contract for the HVAC maintenance and control support services. And Kenny will, Ken Pacheco will bring this forward to us as well. So that was pretty much it for the committee.
Thank you. An update from the Technology Subcommittee, Mr. Aguirre.
Yeah, so the Technology Committee did meet. We reviewed various digital platforms. The district is using, the district is using some, some they were not using, so we went through that to eliminate some, to save some revenue. We looked at the various positions in the technology department that Mr. Cabral had brought forth. My personal opinion on those is that they should be talked to with the union. But the organizational chart that he presented was reviewed, it was very thorough. One of the changes is that Fred TV is now going to fall under Mr. Cabral's department. We talked a little bit about the Chromebooks and the data on, and policies relative to when they get broken. I believe we're going to be getting some information on that, whether we actually have a use policy or not. And we asked Mr. Cabral to review that, as well as the cell phone policy. This committee met twice in the last two months, so I want to thank the other members of the committee for their support, Mrs. Larvee and Mr. Bailey, and we look forward to having future meetings as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Parent and Community Outreach, Ms. Rodriguez.
The Parent and Community Outreach Subcommittee met last Monday. This is our second meeting of the year. We had a few items on the agenda. One of them was attendance. Happy to report that attendance is slowly increasing across the district, but one of the bigger wins is that we have a projected decrease in our chronic absenteeism rate by about 8%. So that's a huge win, just given the fact that this has been such a challenging few years. So that's a, that's a really big win. Efforts continue to get kids in school the whole day, every day. The Community Facilitator Rule Job Description, we discussed a little bit about that, but that's going to come before the full committee tonight. Mr. Cabral had done a very thorough overview of Power School and Parent Square, which I know he has updates again this evening about. We had talked about the transition to Power School, and as that continues to move forward with some ongoing training across the board. We are going live July 1st. As of that meeting, we had talked about Parent Square going live June 1st, so that way we're getting everyone on the same type of parent communication platform, with the goal of getting families on and using the platform by July 1st. So we're hoping to use that month to really, to push that with families. The other thing that we had talked about, and I think we all know that we are really trying to push healthier decision-making, mental wellness across the district. So Saturday, May 21st, I know there is a lot going on in the community on May 21st, but hopefully this is a stop for most people. At Durfee, there will be a Healthier You, um, community event, sorry. There'll be workshops, lots of fun things, hoping to highlight some of the spots at Durfee as well. So that'll be from 10 to 12 at Durfee. Information, resources, giveaways, lots of cool prizes. So just making a push to try to, again, make the community a little bit healthier by offering some of these.
Thank you. Mrs. Rodriguez. Item number five is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mayor Coogan. We actually have some pretty patient, well-mannered Mustangs, I was going to say, Morton Mustangs awaiting, they're going to be part of our superintendent's report today because they're part of a very special event that's coming up, Generation Citizen, the civics projects. Morton Middle School students here, under the direction of Mr. Blanchett, Ms. Cheyenne, are here. They've prepared projects that are aimed at improving their community. This is the fourth year that we've contracted with Generation Citizen. They provide professional development for our eighth-grade teachers and guidance on implementing Action Civics projects. In November 2018, Governor Baker signed into law a requirement that eighth-grade students and high school students develop an Action Civics project. So on June 3rd, eighth-grade students will present their Action Civics projects at Government Center to an audience of local educators, government officials, community stakeholders, and the projects are going to be judged by volunteers. The top 20% selected from each of our middle schools will attend the statewide event on June 6th at the Edward M. Kennedy Institute in Boston. And due to the pandemic, this is the, only the second year that we're attending the event in Boston. At the event, students are going to be able to showcase their projects, and they're going to be, there will be guest speakers, awards, all that good stuff will be happening for their good work. So I'm going to invite the Morton scholars to come down, and they're going to give us a little brief presentation on what they've been working on, their research, and how their, their projects are going. So come on down.
Hello. Our names are Sarah, Madeline, Isaac, Skylar, and Gavin. We are here from Morton Middle School to present our Generation Citizen project about the rising issue of substance abuse in our community.
Our main concern is how the issue is impacting the lives of young children and teenagers in school. Kids in our school system are using and being exposed to drugs every day, and it needs to be addressed. So we are wondering if the subject of drugs and alcohol can be reviewed more in our school's health curriculum.
We can help make, we can help to tackle this problem with out-of-school programs, public speakers, and making more information more available in our schools, in our school to students. This can help address how much of an issue substance abuse is in our community.
We can educate students by adding curriculums to health classes or classes in general to educate the ongoing issue of substance abuse. With this new information, students can make better choices and stop abusing drugs.
Thank you for listening to our concerns. We hope this will help the schools in our community have a better learning environment and safer experiences, and we wish to see these changes being made in our schools and community.
Hello, my name is Giuriella, and I'm with my partner Lorraine. We're here today about our main issue, drug abuse. Most people here know about the problem of drug abuse. Our class mainly focuses on teens and childrens. Over the years, childrens and teens have been doing drugs more often over the years. We're here trying to find solutions on stopping it, for example, the app Truth. A lot of kids mostly do vapes because of increasing feelings of stress and anxiety. On Friday, December 28th, 2018, in two decades, drugs overdose death rates among U.S. kids and teens had tripled. A new study shows young children have either died from accidental use of drugs from intentional poisoning. Meanwhile, teens have died of unintentional overdose, using their parents' prescriptions, painkillers, drugs bought on the streets. In all, almost 9,000 youths have died at the hands of drugs since 1999.
So continuing our project, we did some observations. As if it was harder to find help, we had also put ourselves in their shoes to seek help and understand how hard it was to find help and how they felt. We found out, one out of every five teens do drugs, about 21.3% of eighth-grade students have tried drugs at least once. Our research team has also looked up how drug abuse had started out. Early use of drugs increases a person's chance of becoming addicted, so as Early use of drugs increases a person's champ, chance of becoming addicted, so as, in example, teen or kids and others. A few weeks now, our research team discovered that drug abuse most happens during middle school and high school. In conclusion, as a result, we need to end drug abuse because too many young teens and kids are losing their health and dying. So by ending this, we need to create a small after-school programs and have people and tell their stories of what they've been through. So please help us, please help us have kids and teens have healthier and better lives, so no one has to die over that.
Hello. I'm Mackenzie, and I'm speaking on behalf of Morton Middle School. I'm here to discuss the issue of vaping. So vaping, what is it? Vaping is the inhale, is the inhalation of harmful chemicals through e-cigarettes. An e-cigarette is a battery-operated electronic device that heats a mixture of liquid chemicals into aerosol. Some e-cigarettes, such as Jules, contain as much nicotine as a pack of cigarettes. These chemicals cause health problems and diseases like coronary artery disease, popcorn lung, COPD, increased chances of heart attack, and increased chances of asthma. If you already have asthma, vaping can make it worse. After hearing these health risks, you may start to think teens are too young to feel most of the effects of vaping like this. But surveys have shown that by 2019, 5 million U.S. high school and middle school students use e-cigarettes, and the number is only rising. Teens walking in our schools bathrooms have witnessed many of their own classmates vaping. Research has shown that once you start vaping as a teen, you are more likely to start smoking cigarettes or using other tobacco products. Due to the addictiveness of vaping, it also serves as a gateway to drugs and other illegal substances. After watching this happen, our class has decided to fix this issue. Our class has posted on social media daily about vaping and research on this topic. Through our research, we have found multiple schools that, such as Patrick Henry High, have installed special vape sensors that can detect the chemicals that vapes contain once they are exposed to the air. These sensors would help reduce the amount of people who vape in school due to the inability to do so without being caught. By doing this, we would help the vaping issue in our schools and hopefully improve the vaping issue in other schools as well. Thank you for taking the time to listen to the speech about vaping.
Hello, my name is Jonathan Gruber Jr., and I'm here with my peers, Anisia, Livia, and Alexis. We are here today representing Morton Middle School for our civics project with the topic of mental health issues. We want to find ways that we could target the root causes of mental illness and improve the mental health of teachers and students in our school.
Good afternoon, my name is Alexis, and I go to Morton Middle School. During the pandemic, it was very depressing. Online schools had lots of kids fail because they didn't have the motivation, the concentration, they were lazy, and it was more difficult. And it was boring since we didn't get to interact with people face-to-face. While the pandemic was going on, kids around the age of 12 and up adjusted to masks and felt insecure about their facial features. More than half, when we took the survey, more than half of the surveys was taken by eighth graders and told us that 33.3% wear a mask because of they are insecure. And the biggest percentage was 77.8, which is people who know people who are insecure about their face, which makes them wear masks to hide it.
Hello, I'm Anisia Souza, and like my friend Jonathan stated, we're trying to help spread awareness for mental health of not only students but teachers as well. We are doing this because it is an important topic that gets ignored by many people. Jonathan, Livia, Alexis, and I have come up with strategies to cope with mental health issues. First, we thought that maybe a class or club for students who don't get to express how they feel about their mental health would be important. And then we had the idea of a podcast run by students who would like to advocate for other kids and adults suffering with mental health issues. And our last idea we came up with was having young mentors help kids because of the small amount of counselors we have due to the lack of teachers and needing subs.
Unfortunately, after having various issues in their system when it comes to mental health, especially the lack of support that students received, we decided to come here today to ask for your help and consideration. Thank you for listening to our concern, and we appreciate every single help we can get to make our students' future something lighter.
How many of us are willing to speak up? That is the question so few are willing to address in our community. My name is Kaylee Souza, and my class and I realized through surveys we sent out to students and teachers that when the question was finally answered, the numbers are almost the complete opposite of what we as a school and community should be putting out. We learned at a young age not to tattletale. It was always, "He called me a name." Not now, don't tattle on others. But what happens when we grow up and it changes from name-calling to violence? Well, we're too old for tattletaling, so don't snitch. Snitching is a term taken from giving up information for a lesser prison sentence, but we aren't criminals, so why are we so worried about snitching? That is the problem we're here to address, the problem that so few teens and children alike are willing to speak out about the wrong they see around them. This is where we come in. My class and I are going to stop the fear of speaking out, starting from the very beginning, addressing the phrase "tattletale" with elementary school students and teachers, letting them know there is nothing wrong with reporting what they think is wrong and showing them the difference between tattletaling, snitching, and reporting. We'll be speaking to three different elementary school classes, all from different schools in our community. We should be able to go to school and feel safe, knowing that if something happens, we can tell someone without the judgment from our peers. That is what we are working towards as a group. We are laying the foundation for a school we can go to to get our education without worry and anxiety, a school where people advocate for what is best for themselves and the people around them. Thank you.
Hello, we are Victoria Mello and Alexis LaFerr. Today, we are here to address our concern about homelessness in our community, specifically students who are homeless. We have learned that there is a population of homeless students of all ages here in Fall River. We feel that homeless students struggle with socially and academically, and we are requesting your support in addressing the systemic problems in Fall River Public Schools.
One of the things we think can address the problem is that if we have more programs such as McKenna Vento to assist homeless students and their family, but these programs and their staff must be empathetic and qualified people right now. We feel our homeless peers are embarrassed with the fact that they are homeless, and many of them may shy away from homeless programs if other students know that they are a student in need. We are asking that when programs are offered or announced, service providers and school staff are well-trained so that way they're able to keep the students' information private and discreet. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you very much, Morton. See you in the morning. Ms. Larvee?
Can I wait until you're done or speak on this? I'm good. So first, I want to say thank you. That was absolutely incredible. What impressed me most was how factual and powerful it really was, and I commend every single one of you for getting up here and presenting to this body. Very, very impressive. It's the epitome of youth voice, right? The epitome of youth voice and in youth empowerment. Mental health, drugs, bullying, snitching, all of it. We, we need to pay attention. And right now, as of right now, actually, even before now, but you're just, after this presentation, I hope a lot more people are listening. Okay? Because you just made a big difference, and I, and I commend all of you. Thank you for your presentation.
Mrs. Rodriks?
So I just want to, again, say thank you to echo what Ms. Larvee had said, but also, it takes a lot of guts to stand up here and talk to a room full of adults. And so I know that as teens, as young teens, you're, you're sort of used to not being heard, like, okay, sit down, yep, we heard you, let the adults get it. But this is the epitome of leadership right here. You have kids that just stood up, talked about what they needed, came up with solutions for what they needed, and I know that most, all of my colleagues right here are listening, and I wrote down everything that you said. So I plan on taking that back and advocating for what you guys are saying that you need because, you know what? We can talk about what you need, but it means more hearing it from you. So I appreciate all of that.
Mr. Bailey?
Just to follow up what my colleagues were saying, great job. I was sitting here, and I'm not going to say who, but one of, one of the students came up and, you know, she was like, you know, and it's a lot at your age to stand up and speak, just like what Ms. Rodriks was saying, to get up here and actually voice your opinion. You guys are true leaders, and I'm proud of each and every one of you.
Okay. I know Superintendent has a couple more points she wants to talk about under her report section. You're well set?
Yep. No, I just have Math Acceleration and End of the Year Activities, but before I do that, thank you. Thank you, thank you for the teachers that prepare them, as well as all of you for having the courage to come up here and to articulate what your needs are. We are here to serve you, so we listened, and we heard you loud and clear. Good for you. Thank you. So moving on, Math Acceleration. During April Vacation, as you know, February, and we did it, we repeated it again in April Vacation, we hosted our second Math Acceleration Academy for the year. This was part of the DESI initiative for, to bring these academies to support students with real-world math problems. We, Fall River Public Schools engaged 407 students during April Vacation in math academies, and teachers, support staff, engaged students from schools across the city at six different sites, Durfee, Tanzi, Doren, Viveras, Fonsica, and Green. Over the week, students engaged in 20-plus hours of mathematics instruction in a small group setting aimed at accelerating their learning around grade-level standards. The focus was on surfacing and supporting students' ability to make sense of, represent, and explain mathematical concepts. In addition to the math focus, elementary students engaged in a variety of enrichment activities, including fine arts, physical education, and STEM. And our middle and high school students, it was held at Durfee, and they were able to engage in Durfee enrichment programming, which included sculpture, swimming, and culinary arts. So it's a well-attended academy, and a huge thank you to the staff that worked through vacation to make the success, a success, as well as to students and their families for valuing that work. And also, all of you have received an end-of-year spreadsheet that has all the promotional activities, as well as some significant events throughout the district, so that you can plan accordingly. I know that Soleil's going to talk specifically about some Durfee activities, but some of you have inquired about some dates, and we want to make sure that you're able to coordinate your calendars and schedules, so that's in your hard copy, as well as we're doing it electronically, and we'll put it up on our site, just so that you have access to everything that's happening. This is a busy time, May and June are going to go by very quickly, and there's a lot going on throughout 16 schools, so please check that and, and so that you can attend as many or all the activities that you, you choose to. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Superintendent. I'd like to turn it over now to Soleil Gwask for the student report.
Okay. Hi, everyone. So some of the things that I'll be talking about today is some of the involvement that I've been having with the Playbook Training. So just to introduce a little bit on what that is, it's inspired by some of the members of the 2016 and 2017 Celtics roster, so this is part of the Boston Celtics Foundation. And the Shamrock Foundation launched an anti-discrimination and bias-prevention program called the Playbook Initiative. So I've been a playbook trainer for approximately two years. This is my first time doing it in person. So this program essentially inspires, inspires a dialogue on race, religion, gender, disability, and sexual orientation, a lot of topics that aren't normally talked about in the classroom. And it ultimately equips kids with the tools to intervene in challenging social situations. So as my second year of playbook, I had the opportunity of facilitating this workshop online to approximately 200 eighth graders across the state of Massachusetts. And I also got to facilitate a portion of this workshop last year to the Mass Superintendent's Conference in Mashpee. And this year, I was able to also do it virtually to about a few eighth graders across the state, as well as administer a in-person workshop at Talbot Middle School. So just to talk a little bit about it, it was approximately two days long, and it would be about like one to two hours of a workshop where I would divide it into a warm-up and the scenario discussion, which was sort of the meat of what this Playbook Initiative is, where we would introduce a scenario or a social scene in which students are allowed to input how they would intervene in the situation. So as a facilitator, I wasn't allowed to input any of my opinion. So this was purely just an open discussion amongst all the middle schoolers, so they could, like, discuss how they would personally intervene, and there was a lot of discussion questions. And personally, I think the outcome was absolutely amazing because we had a large variety of eighth graders speaking based on their own experience, which isn't really talked about in the classroom, and it's very useful for life skills and for life transitioning into high school and after that. So preparing them for situations that they may encounter all throughout their life. So I really wanted to emphasize that these workshops are very helpful and useful to shape leaders and to steer these student leaders in a really good direction. And I hope to hopefully administer this workshop with more middle schools and hopefully expand it to the community. And yeah, so that's a little bit about playbook. And one other thing I wanted to talk about was an update from the State Student Advisory Council. So I am part of the Massachusetts Department of Education State Student Advisory Council. I'm the Chair of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. So some of the things that we have been working on in terms of educational reform projects have been the compiling a new history framework for DESI on challenges of the 14th Amendment Equal Protection Clause through the lens of federal legislation in favor of various ethnic groups. So what our team essentially did, I led this project where a lot of us divided it into the African-American community, like Asian-Americans and such, and we sort of talked about a new history framework that was very much missing into their history department, which was talking about the effects of the 14th Amendment Equal Protection Clause through the lens of these various ethnic groups, so.
Excellent. Nice to have you here. Anything further? Thank you, Soleil. Item number seven, we have four sets of minutes. I'd like to see if we can get them all approved at once.
Motion to approve all minutes.
Second.
I have a motion of second, and those minutes are the special meeting of the Farver School Committee on March 14th, the regular meeting of the School Committee on March 14th, the joint meeting of the City Council and School Committee on April 7th, and the regular meeting of the School Committee on April 11th. I have a motion of second, any discussion? Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Jhar?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriks?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number eight is the approval of some travel requests.
Motion to approve travel requests, as stated.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion of second, any discussion on the three travel requests we have in front of us? Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Jhar?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriks?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number nine is the acceptance of donations.
Motion to accept donations.
I have a motion of second. I'm sorry, Mr. Aguirre? Did you have something, Mr. Aguirre?
I apologize, I have action issues? Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
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 Hello?
Okay, we heard you, Kev. We're on donations.
I just had a couple of questions on the last Superintendent's Report. I know, I was talking and he answered, and I raised my hand, and nobody answered that either.
I didn't hear you on that one, Kev. What's the question on the Superintendent's Report? We'll go back, but hold on, let's finish donations first, Kevin, and then we'll go back. You just cut off.
No, it's, it's just a screen, that's all.
Oh, it's just a screen? Can I have a motion to accept the donations? I have a motion of second. Let's vote on that, and then we'll go back to Kevin's question.
Who made the second?
Who made the second?
I thought Bobby.
Uh, Bobby, yep.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Jhar?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rodriks?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Mr. Aguirre has a question on the Superintendent's Report.
So I had a question on the, the students when they were presenting the drug and alcohol awareness. I know I asked in the past for a copy of the curriculum, and I'm not sure if that was sent, or is that ongoing?
The Generation Citizen curriculum, we can get that to you. We'll send it to the entire committee tomorrow.
Now, a couple of months ago, during the presentation- A couple of months ago, during the presentations on the budget, I had asked for a copy of our current curriculum for drug and alcohol awareness, K to 12, and I don't recall seeing that.
Yes, you're correct. I think that I forwarded that, Mr. Agia from Ms. Sharp, but I will get that again, I will forward that again.
Thank you. My other thing, Mr. Chairman, was I had a subcommittee I hadn't reported out on. So, I want to report out on the subcommittee for the Durfee Athletic Fields that I've been serving on, for the edification of the committee.
That's not on the agenda tonight. Kev, that's not on the agenda, it'll probably be on the next one.
So, when I, so, we've been meeting on a, we've been meeting relative to the Durfee Athletic Fields, myself, a number of people in the community, Mr. Pacico, the Athletic Director, Assistant Athletic Director, a good group of people, and I believe that should have been on the agenda for the subcommittee reports.
There is, I don't think there's.
So, I just want to briefly talk about what we've been going over.
Well, it's not on the agenda, Kevin.
Isn't the heading "Subcommittee Reports"?
No, we did the three that were on the agenda.
I know, the heading, main heading is "Subcommittee Reports."
But we passed those, and we did the three.
I'm on that committee because somebody in the administration asked me to be on it.
No, I know, but we don't have a report from your subcommittee tonight.
So, I shouldn't report out on it? So, you told me not to submit, not to talk about it, then?
It's not on the agenda, Kev.
Okay, doesn't it say "Subcommittee Reports"?
But we have the three listed that are on the subcommittee reports, and we did the three, you, Ms. Rodrick, and Mr. Hart. We did all three.
So, I have a subcommittee that I'd like to report on, and you're telling me that I should not, and I cannot?
No, it'll probably be on next month's agenda.
We had it, I'll talk about it later, I just thought it was a pertinent time to talk about the subcommittees when the heading is "Subcommittees."
Yeah, it's not on the agenda, Kev, that's all. We gotta have Ms. Pont read the donations, please.
Okay. On behalf of Sylvia Elementary School, Principal Lenz requests acceptance of 50 headphones, donation valued at $749.50 from New World. This is to be used in the classroom. On behalf of Durfee High School and Principal Damaris, we request the acceptance of $132.41 donation from Pell Industries. This is to be used at the discretion of the principal. On behalf of Durfee High School and Principal Damaris, we request the acceptance of $22.17, a donation from Ohio Piled Prints, and this is to be used at the discretion of Principal Damaris. And on behalf of Fonseca Elementary School and Principal Lisi, we request the acceptance of one fully-assembled, two-story Little Free Library chart assigned with registration, steward's guide booklet, starter collection of books, a donation from the Little Free Library. This donation will be to provide a resource of books to the Fonseca School community at a location close to their homes, that's a mobile library. Thank you, everyone.
Nice, thank you. Item number 10 is the approval of contracts. We have one, two, three, four, five, could I get a motion to approve contracts?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion on contracts?
I do.
Question.
Ms. Larvee first, then Mr. Agia.
Just a question on the Power School Group, is that the same figure that we discussed at the last meeting, or is this another $31,000?
Same figure.
Scott.
So, during my budget presentation, I mentioned the fact that we were exploring several different variations of software for onboarding. We currently use a packet of electronic PDF files, which bogs down the time, is approximately 13 or 14 forms within that packet. This would be to add a module, and we tried, I think, four different demonstrations of different software from different companies that would allow us to electronically onboard people. They could fill out the forms, send them in ahead of time, we can check whether they're making progress, check back with them, assist if needed, and this would streamline the onboarding process. We have a number of positions to fill this year. We're currently down one person in the HR Department, which we'll be posting for, but we expect to have a very busy hiring season, third one in a row, of trying to fill openings. So, this package of software would allow us to complete that.
Just.
But it's different than anything you've seen before.
So, it's different, so we didn't know Power School did this before?
There were, it was one of the companies that we were exploring and having them do demonstrations, and we had some companies do multiple demonstrations as we went through that process.
So, we're paying Power School now another $31,000 for onboard training?
This is a series of HR documents that are not part of Power School's regular program for CIS, the Student Information System, Staff Information System.
Okay.
This is strictly for them to develop our forms, make them all electronic, get them back and forth, and create a system which allows us to monitor the onboarding.
Okay, so almost a coincidence that it's Power School?
They're just one of the vendors that we looked at. If they didn't have one, we, you know, we would not have been contacted.
I now have a better understanding, I yield, thank you.
Mr. Agia?
So, on that same line of questioning, what are we not paying for that we paid for last year?
I don't understand the question, Mr. Agia.
Repeat it, Mr. Agia, your question?
My question is, what are we not paying, we paid for last year with a different company?
We didn't have a different company, Mr. Agia.
Mr. Agia, currently.
So, who was doing the work?
Currently, anything that's HR-related is input into AspenX2, but it's done by hand. The paper, it's a paper process, so an employee would come in, pick up the papers, they would fill out the paperwork, they would go through the process. This piece, and Power School just happened to be the vendor that was chosen, is going to eliminate the paperwork, it's gonna create a digital process, right from the piece that if a prospective employee applies for a job on school spring, it will automatically populate all of their information, demographics, licensure information into this system, which will then in turn populate a number of forms, so that way, when the employee comes in for the onboarding process, there is no more need for someone to sit in the conference room and fill out 25 to 30 minutes' worth of paperwork. Everything will be done digitally, and it will create a workflow process to make the HR Department more efficient.
So, I think it sounds like it makes sense, I just wondered why in 2021, we were still doing things the old-fashioned way? I guess that's just the way it was, the programs, it wasn't like we were way, way behind?
So, when I came on as CIO, I've been working very closely with Mr. Coogan, and one of Mr. Coogan's goals in the HR Department was to become more efficient, and, you know, in 2021, 2022, we've made some great strides in that area. We're also looking at and have approved a vendor to do a digital scanning of all of our current Life Card information for all of our employees, which will then in turn be ingested into Power Schools into this module, so that the HR team can look at everything on a digital end, and finally rid ourselves of 90% of the paperwork.
And what is the amount going forward? It's gonna be less than the first, must be more in the first year, right?
Yeah, there's a small portion that is a setup fee, I believe it's about $6,000 or $7,000 for some of the crossover work, and after that, it would drop in the low 20s.
And that would go under Mr. Coogan's budget, I would assume, going forward?
I would assume so as well.
Because it's related to HR, I mean.
Correct, it's one of the software programs that we use. For instance, there are several others for absence management, and some other stuff that have specific functions that are currently under my budget.
Right, thank you very much.
Did you yield, Kev? I guess he did. Any more discussion on contracts? We have a motion, a second, Deb, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
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 Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Ms. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mary Coogan?
Yes. We only have a couple of grants tonight. I'm looking for a motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any discussion on our two grants? Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Ms. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mary Coogan?
Yes. Committee of the whole, 12.1, is a vote to approve school choice for out-of-district students in grades six to 12, and non-resident students in grades K5 for the Fall River Public School employees, consistent with the collective bargaining agreements for the '22-'23 school year, as presented by Maria Pont, Superintendent.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Deb, please call the roll. Mr. Agia?
Could we just, Ms. Pont, briefly explain what this is, so that we're all on the same page, including the public?
Okay.
Sure, school choice, we, there's a policy that says that we, if pending available space, that we have an agreement that we are able to take students from out of our district, out of Fall River Public Schools, from our neighboring communities, pending spacing. Typically, that is for grades six through 12, because usually our elementary grades are always filled up. The exception for K through five is for employees, if they have children, that they want to bring into the district. And again, that's pending spacing, that we make an allowance for them to enroll them in Fall River Public Schools.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Ms. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mary Coogan?
Yes. 12.2 is discussion and vote to approve an agreement, approval, for the South Coast Educational Collaborative, as presented by Michael Loesch, Assistant Superintendent of Special Education.
Motion to approve.
Ms. Larvee?
Yep, motion to approve, and I have to read, okay?
Please, Ms. Larvee.
So, motion, having read the South Coast Educational Collaborative Agreement, we vote to reaffirm our request that the Fall River School District join the South Coast Educational Collaborative as a member with full benefits, privileges, and responsibilities, and subject to the terms and conditions of the collaborative agreement, approved by the Department of Education, and subject to the applicable rules and regulations, that the Chairman of this School Committee is authorized on behalf of the committee to execute all appropriate documentation to consummate the committee's decision, and that the Superintendent of Schools is appointed as the district's representative on the collaborative's board.
Thank you.
Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, question?
I have a second. Mr. Hart seconded it, Mr. Agia has a question.
Can the Superintendent or Mr. Loesch explain how much money we've saved in the last several years on this being part of this organization?
I believe the last time we examined it, it was around $200,000 per school year. On average, savings for every student who attends, comparing the district rate versus, member rate versus the non-member rate, it's anywhere from a range of $5,000 to $10,000 per student, and we've had a fluctuating number here and there at South Coast, anywhere from about 35 to 42 over the past few years.
So, my problem with that is, obviously, I'm a supporter of this, but I brought this up three years ago, so let's just call it two years. So, by our prior Superintendent not wanting to follow up and just go to a meeting once a month, this district has lost $400,000. I find that to be totally unacceptable, and I just can't understand how this has taken this long, literally, and I'd like to get a report from the Superintendent with an exact figure, so every member of the committee and the public knows how much money we have lost by some of the actions that we've taken in the past. Would that I yield?
If I can just clarify, it took a year-long process for us to get into the collaborative, because every single district that's in the collaborative had to have us approved by their school committee, had to go through the process, and then had to go to Commissioner Riley, he had to approve also, and then we take the final vote tonight, and we're officially in the collaborative. I've spoken to Mr. Heimbecker multiple times throughout the year, he has included me in, we have professional development that we're gonna be part of, and we, we're gonna move forward with it, so I just want you to know that this year, it's, we've had to go through the process, that's why it's taken us time. But with the vote, we are officially in the collaborative, and I look forward to working with the group. I've spoken to several of the superintendents on it, and.
Adam Superintendent, you're not saying that we haven't lost money, right?
Please?
Are you trying to say that we haven't saved the money?
This year, we have not been part of the collaborative, we're going to be joining the collaborative, we're in, as of this vote, so we will be part of the collaborative this year. We will get you all those figures, Mr. Agia, the whole committee, those figures in the report, but.
And the dates and times, because we've lost $400,000, our yield.
Okay, Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, I just wanted to, because I talked to the Superintendent a little bit before the meeting, and about regarding the South Coast Collaborative, and I'm very, very happy and excited that we're gonna be part of this after tonight, and I think it's a good first move, first step forward, and I'm really happy that Superintendent Pont, you're gonna be attending those meetings.
Absolutely.
And I look forward to hearing back from you, the, maybe a summary, a homework assignment, if you will, for those particular meetings, and what kind of benefits we can get for being part of that collaborative, so thank you very much.
Anything further on South Coast Collaborative? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
Yes?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larvee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Ms. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mary Coogan?
Yes. Item 12.3 is a discussion and vote to approve Fall River Youth Soccer Association, as referred by the Facilities and Operations Subcommittee, and presented by Ken Pacico, Chief Operating Officer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, Mr. Pacico.
So, at the subcommittee meeting, the Fall River Youth Soccer had a presentation to let us know that partially because of COVID and the lack of ability to use the fields, they had some expenses that they had no way to recover from, quite a bit of money, around $40,000, if my memory serves me right. So, we, they asked the committee if we would consider taking back the cost of taking care of the fields, basically the grass cutting. They would continue to do the weed control and other fertilizing situations that they currently handle, and we will do this for one year, and then I'm assuming that we will have another conversation with Fall River Youth Soccer moving forward. So, the agreement that you have before you is basically the same language of the previous agreement, and the only thing that was done to this document was the dates were changed. So, it's for a one-year period, and before the one year is up, we'll have a conversation with them to see where they stand.
Any questions for Mr. Pacico? Hearing none?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Agia?
Just a comment, I think there's probably some, you should let the other members know about how long this has been going on, what the rationale was, did the youth soccer pay a lot of money for the Britlin Park fields? Like, I think putting it in perspective makes it a little different than just a straight-up, you know, just one vote here, I think there's more to the story that, I'm in support of this, but I want the public and everyone to know why. Would that I yield?
Thank you. Any further discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia?
I thought Mr. Pacico was gonna answer.
I can, I don't have all the history, because the original agreement is well before my time, but I can tell you that I was on the city side with Britlin Park, and the agreement and the work that the Fall River Youth Soccer Group put into getting that field in place, the turf field at Britlin, through the grant that we received from DCR. And as far as the Sylvia School, I was on the building committee at the Sylvia School when that was developed. Wasn't a part of the negotiations way back then, which is 2004, with Fall River Youth Soccer. But they have been a good partner, and we have tried to, to be very helpful and a good partner to them also with what we can and can't do for them. So this, the agreement that we were trying to put together was a five-year agreement to take care of the fields completely. I'm sorry, so that they could take care of the fields completely, and they would do the mowing, and it would be on their schedule as opposed to fitting into our schedule. We've got about 120 acres of grass to take care of, and depending on rain days and different delays, sometimes we can't get to the field when they would like it. So we're going to do our best to help them out this year and see if we can get them through this year. And we look forward to another agreement after this one is in place.
And Mr. Mona, does the director of maintenance thinks that we can, we can do this cutting with the current staff?
Yes. So I've, I've talked to them, and they've, they've already begun, you know, the regular cutting of the field, and we'll fit it into our schedule.
And last question is on the sign that was in, that was, I watched the subcommittee deal with last year. Did we already approve that sign? There was some controversy with a sign that just said "Home of Youth Soccer" out front. Is that a new thing, or is that part of?
I don't remember putting any signs up as part of anything. I, I'm, if it happened, I don't believe that it came through my office, so. If there's a sign up there now, it was here when I got here.
It says it in the, it says it in the, in the contract. That's why I'm reading it.
If that sign, hold on one second.
Is the proven cost of the sign is soccer?
So it's, it's 2014, 15, 16? I arrived here late on 16, so it was put in back then with the original. As I said, this contract here has wording from the original contract. And the reason why we did that was because it was vetted out at one point. It's all pertinent, with the exception of that sign that we will obviously pull out of there since it's already done.
Yep. And my only other comment is I think it was $100,000 that the, that youth soccer paid for the Britlin Park field, which is a large amount of money if I recall, but I do think that they should get some credit, and that's why I'm in favor of this. Would that I yield? Thank you.
Anything further? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Jahar?
Yes.
Ms. Larevi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Ms. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 12.4 is a discussion and vote to approve traffic concerns at the Laterno Elementary School as referred by the Facilities and Operations Subcommittee and presented by Ken Pacico, Chief Operating Officer. Mr. Pacico.
Thank you. So we have a letter attached to the memo from Principal Simpson, who he, he and Officer Galveo went to the committee, to the subcommittee, to talk about the traffic situation. The traffic situation at, at Laterno mimics quite a bit of our schools, with the exception of being such a two-street kind of fill. It's a, it's a very difficult school to get to twice a week, twice a day, I wish it was twice a week. Twice a day, every day while school's in session. Anthony Street and Stafford Road. It's very complicated to move those, those vehicles in and out of that school along with the school buses. So there was a request to let us move forward with a traffic study to start off with, and then moving past that to a community meeting at, held at Laterno. And then the request from that, from those two pieces of this solution would go to the traffic board. And then the traffic board would hear the argument on, on this side of it. I'm sure that there will be some neighbors, abutters to the property that will have comments that we will bring forward to the traffic board, or they will bring them forward themselves. And the traffic board would, will decide the, the best remedy. It can be from making the street a one-way for certain hours, or it could be a complete one-way on the Anthony Street side to facilitate traffic. And that, the traffic study will show methods as to what we could do and give us some recommendations. But it will ultimately be a joint effort between the neighborhood and the school.
Thank you, Mr. Pacico. Mr. Hart?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Ken, I, I know you're, you're already ahead of the game here, but I would really continue to stress to you about letting the neighbors know exactly what's going on. And I know you're doing it. I know you're going to have a neighborhood meeting at Laterno, and that's good. They've got a good neighborhood group there, and they're very active. But it's, it's very important because that's, it's going to be a very tough, tough decision, and it's going to be a tough process to alleviate that, that kind of the traffic there. It's a very congested neighborhood. It's a, it's a big school. It's got relatively not enough parking, really, in the parking lot to suit the school. So, but that's all, that's all, I know you're ahead of it, but sometimes when this is going to be a long process, the neighbors really need to be kept in touch with everything, especially the abutters.
Absolutely. I do have Principal Simpson here, if he'd like to come down and address the-
No, I remember at the last, the subcommittee meeting on April 25th, I recommended that you get some type of letter out to the neighborhoods already. Has that happened?
It has not, and I was waiting for this committee.
Okay. That's, that's fine.
Good evening. I just want to reassure the, the community at home. This process is going to be collaborative. We want to, all of our abutters, we want a safe process for our students to unload, and we want to involve the community. So as principal of the school, I'll be sure to collaborate with all stakeholders involved all steps of the way and look forward to, you know, making Laterno an even safer and more supportive space for our parents and students.
Thank you. Ms. Larevi?
Yes, I just want to echo Mr. Hart's as well, the community aspect, okay, we're all on board with that. But how long is the traffic survey going to take, give or take? Are we asking for this September? Remind me.
So the hope is that we do the traffic study now.
Right.
As quickly as we can, you know, find a contractor to do that work. And then the results of that will go to that community meeting that we will have. If it's before school, while school's in session, we will have it. If it isn't, we'll have it over the summer. And then the process will move as quickly as we can. The park board, I'm sorry, the traffic board meets every month. So we will be able to get on an agenda sometime this summer for the traffic board. And if that's the case, then it will go to city council. So the quicker we get the start of this thing, the more opportunity we're going to have to hit this on, on September for our opening.
But that's what we're shooting for. We're shooting for September.
Yes.
The change to happen before we start school.
Yes.
Okay. I yield. Thank you.
Anything further on 12.4? Mr. Agia.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, thank you. So I did watch the meeting as well, and it, it struck me that when I read the, the information from the minute, meeting here, there was a letter dated March 6 from the principal, and it's May 9. So I'm wondering who, like it says, "To whom it may concern," and it was talking about right turn only out of the parking lot. I'm not sure how that can even be suggested if there's a two-way street.
So the, the process started-
Somebody tell me.
God, I'm sorry.
No, I'm just looking at, so, for some answers on why it took so long, because now we're, we might not get anything back.
Well, we-
I'm reading it. It says March 6, that's all.
So, so we did have conversation with the traffic board, and I think that some of the delay was basically the cart before the horse. You know, we tried to see how quickly this thing could get done, both with the Fall River PD and at the school level. And we needed to be sure that we had permission to go out for a traffic study, do the work we need to do. To be totally honest, the answer that's, that the letter addressed as it is may be the solution. But I, I think that we need to look at all of the possibilities of, of a way we could make that traffic pattern, both in the morning and in the afternoon, work out to the school's benefit and also the neighborhood. So it, it was a one-question response at the beginning, but I, I think that, looking at the overall situation, I think we have an opportunity here to be sure that when we make a change, that it's going to work for everyone.
Yeah, I can appreciate that answer. My only thing is, and maybe it's just me, but this, this is not a new issue. This has been going on for years over there. So I know we've tried some things or whatever, but it's frustrating to me to get a letter in March when we know all year this has been a problem. We knew last year it was a problem. And we don't have anything on what has been tried or not. I know in the past somebody talked about a back entrance when the, when the mall wasn't there, but I just don't think we, we've given this the attention that it needs, so I'm glad it's finally getting there. I just want to say that. Would that I yield?
Okay, anything further? I'm looking for a motion and a second.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion for Ms. Larevi and a second for Mr. Bailey. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Jahar?
Yes.
Ms. Larevi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Ms. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Item number 12.5 is a discussion and vote to approve the community facilitator job description as presented by Tom Coogan, Human Resource Director. I have a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion on this? Hearing none. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Agia.
Can we just get a presentation or something, at least, to know what it is?
Mr. Coogan.
The community facilitator job description was created several years ago, potentially for the ESL program. I believe there was three to four community facilitators hired over the last few years. As we did the budget presentations this year, as you know, the, the principals came forward and wanted to use the position as a support for the families of their school communities. We took some feedback because there was some confusion as to the clarity of the role during the budget process. As the principals came forward, each one of them sort of had a different vision of what that, that position was like. So using the feedback from the principals during meetings that the superintendent held with them and getting that feedback, we then incorporated into the original ESL community facilitator job description, made those modifications, created the new job description. And I would say it's probably about 80% of what it was before, 75 to 80% of what it was before, with that feedback on those specifics that the, the principals want to incorporate as they take that position away from merely an ESL position and make it part of their office operations and their school community to support their families. So that is the job description that you see before you this evening.
So are they all the same now? They're going to all go by this job description?
They are. There is still the community facilitator job description for the ESL people, of which we currently have three, I believe, on staff. But this is a community facilitator job description, non-ESL, and this is for the school-based positions.
So there's a separate job description for-
The ESL one, yes.
For the other department?
Yes.
Totally separate?
Yep.
Thank you. I yield.
Anything further?
I have a, I have a question.
Ms. Rodrick?
So in, in here, I know that they were originally designed as part of the, our English language learners, but there's nothing in here about assisting with CPACs either. Like, we have it in there about PACs.
That's right.
But we're missing CPACs.
Yes, I, I just noticed that too. I circled it. It, it calls out, it says "such school events and assist with MLL events, LPAC, school council," but it doesn't call out CPACs specifically.
So I think if we're going to call one out, I think we need to call out the other one.
We can add that line. I was having a little trouble hearing it before. We can add that line. I think that was just as, by way of example for school-based meetings with families of the school community, so we can add that piece.
Which I can totally appreciate, but if we're going to call one out, I think we've got to call out the other one. And those are our two main advisory, we have our parent advisory councils, and we have our MLL advisory councils, and then we have our CPACs as well. So if we're going to call them out, we've got to call them all out.
We'll revise.
Anything further, Ms. Rodrick?
No, I yield.
Okay. Do you have a motion and a second?
We do.
Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Ms. Jahar?
Yes.
Ms. Larevi?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira? Ms. Rodrick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Okay, 12.6 is a discussion and vote to approve the Student Support Specialist Job Description as presented by Tom Coogan, Human Resource Director.
This is similar to the, the previous job description we just talked about. Originally, this position existed at the high school only, and this was to help students with the implementation of both academic support as well as classroom support with some of the SEL support needs as well as students who are on intervention plans, whether they be short-term or continuous. And, and that was being used at the high school. I think it's an important thing to note that the Student Support Specialist is a licensed teacher position so that there is a background in the academic component of this particular position. Again, since this position was coming out of the high school and moving down to the lower levels, I think there was a little bit of clarity that needed to be added to the job description, similar to the previous one we just discussed. We use the feedback from those principal meetings of what they were looking to, to sort of augment the original job description with, and that's incorporated within the document you see.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Agia.
Yeah, so I, I'm not in favor of this as it's listed here. We gave feedback, I think the whole committee did, related to the counseling needs of the students, the SEL needs. I see this as the same job as, at the high school, which is a teaching position. And I don't think that's the purpose of why this position was created. You're going to have plenty of people that could service kids that don't have a teaching license. That this position was created sort of as a, a mini counselor, somebody that could support our children and then, and get to an adjustment counselor. It wasn't meant for teachers' union positions, that people would leave the classroom to go to this position. The focus on mental health and SEL needs to be the focus. It's not about the teaching part. When I voted and, and talked about this, and I think everybody understands, including all the people that work for us in the counseling fields, I don't understand why this would be a teaching position. And I, I'm not supportive of this. I think we need to have a position sort of like a mini counselor and somebody that can handle the SEL needs. But this is not taking feedback in any way, as far as I'm concerned. And we're just going to take teachers out of the classroom and put them into this one. It clearly indicates a bachelor's degree in psychology and social work as one of the preferred qualifications. So this is not going to serve the needs as we need it, and I'm not in favor of it as is until it gets changed. Would that I yield?
If I can just interject, Mr. Agia, this is a layer between the counseling, the SAC services, and teachers. This position is supposed to provide some interven, SEL intervention support. They can push into classrooms, they can run small groups, focus on targeted behaviors, et cetera. This is direct result. We talked to principals, we talked to them and said, you know, we have student support specialist, we have behavior therapist, we have behavior specialist, we have SACs, and asked them what their needs were. This position is intended to do exactly what you're saying, to not, to, to push into a classroom and to teach with teachers. This is really a layer of SEL support in between the counselor and the classroom. So, go ahead.
I have a comment about-
Ms. Rodrick?
Okay, so I, I agree that the position is needed. What I'm struggling with is having them come in with, with a teaching license. So if we're saying that they're going to be part of the teachers' union, and we're saying like, oh, they're going to provide academic support as well, then how is that different than what the instructional support liaison is, right? different than what the instructional support liaison is, right? This position, to me, feels like that in-between role, that you have an ISL person over here, and you have a student support specialist over here. So when I'm looking at this, coming from that background, it doesn't make sense to me why somebody would have a teaching license and be in a teachers' union to take that position. Because frankly, you're not going to attract the right folks. You're going to be missing out on your whole pool of folks with a bachelor's in psych or a bachelor's in social work. They're not coming to the table with a teaching license. They're not going to do that. And to provide this work, if we're focused on SEL, they need to be heavy on that side and not so much on the academic side, because we have folks that are doing the academic side.
There's nothing on there that says that.
That's how Mr. Coogan led.
Right, but there's nothing, that was the shift that we were making when we talked to principals, and they're not providing academic support. They're observing students in their academic setting and providing SEL support as a result of that.
But I think this is where my confusion lies.
Yep, I agree.
Because Mr. Coogan led with that, and then they're also salary and benefits in accordance with the Florida Education Educators Association contracts.
Right, we have a lot of people in FREA that are not certified teachers, they're in different lanes, but.
But if I see them more in line with like the SACs, that's just where my brain's going right now, and it's not adding up for me.
I yield.
Anything further?
Just, yes.
Ms. LaRivee.
So preferred qualifications, the bachelor's degree in psychology, social work, a related field. Like, right now, do we have any teachers with psychology degrees that are in the district that we know of? Like, is that rare, to have a teacher with a psychology?
We don't have a great deal of them, but we do have teachers that teach sociology courses, et cetera, yes.
Teaching courses. So that's where I agree with Ms. Roderick. I think we're kind of limiting the field of opportunity to get people if we're keeping this in as a teacher in the Florida Educators Association. I mean, I do agree with the whole qualification, we accept that part, you know, the job description, all of it, but I don't know about a teacher.
I'm confused, anyway. Where does it say certified teacher?
At the bottom.
So we have several of these positions already in the unit now, and they are certified teachers.
But the job doesn't say certified.
MTEL, I'm sorry. MTEL, they pass the DESI Required License Your Piece, but not specific content areas.
So we do.
We have some that are currently serving in that role at the high school who, so we have student support specialists at the high school who are certified teachers. Then we have ESNons who are behavior specialists who are not certified teachers. So, and this is supposed to be another, a position that's supposed to provide that layer of SEL support. So I think that what we're stuck on is the preferred qualifications and how we word that, so that we don't limit ourselves to just a certified teacher, that we open up that pool, so that we have people who have social work or that experience. So we need to make sure that we can say preferred or, so we'll look at, we can actually go back and look at how we word it and then send it, or we could send it on Friday.
Do you want to table it tonight? Table it?
Make a motion to table.
We have a motion to table.
Second.
I have a motion, a second.
Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion on it, table it? Deb, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Agia.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Agia.
Can I please ask Attorney Assad to weigh in on how he came to, was he part of this to put this on the contract, on this language here?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question. Kevin, you're going to have to speak a little louder into the mic. I can't hear you.
Were you consulted before this got on the agenda by Mr. Coogan or Superintendent Potts?
It's an existing position.
Or anybody?
Yeah, I know.
It's a current position that we just tweaked the job description, Mr. Agiar. So it's already a previously approved position that we went back to the table and took feedback and then reworked it, so we're bringing it back to the committee so that we could show the committee of the, you know, how we changed it. But this is not a new position that we created for tonight.
This position was originally approved in 2015.
Yep, so Attorney Assad can weigh in on whether, when we change it, when we took the feedback to make it an SEL focus instead of what currently exists, should we go through the proper channels to look at the contracts, to see where it should fall before it comes to this committee?
I think.
The answer to that is yes.
Sagia, I think that the issue you brought up has been heard, and the matter has been tabled, and we'll be taking a look at it after this meeting.
Thank you. I just hope you consulted, because as lead negotiator, we shouldn't be getting these things placed on our agenda without you, Attorney Assad, as our lead negotiator, being part of it. And I'd also like to request a written recommendation from the people that are working with the SEL in our district, the head counselor, Mrs. Hope, to see where they weigh in on these conversations as well, because I do think it's important, but we need to get it right, including the salary ranges, because I think that's where we go wrong. We approve things and pigeonhole ourselves, and we don't even know what we're voting on sometimes. With that, I yield.
Any further discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Ms. Jahaar.
Yes.
Ms. LaRivee.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. 12.7 is an update on Power School is presented by Scott Cabral, Chief Information Officer.
Good evening, everyone. You received a memo in your packet, but I'm just going to briefly talk about some of the more important pieces that have happened. First would be on the human resource side. Mr. Coogan and I met with Frontline, which is our current absence manager system. We are going to be using that for accruals moving forward on July 1st, because Power School does not offer that currently in their system. This is going to be a cost-neutral piece. Our current contract with Frontline has all of those options in the system. We just, up until this point, have not used those modules, but moving forward, we will. They are working on getting a timeline for us, and they are very positive that there will be no issue moving forward for July 1 with accruals and absence management for staff. So that was a big win. It is not going to be a very heavy lift on our end. They're going to be able to take our data from X2, push it into Frontline, and moving forward, everything on the accruals and absent management piece will be Frontline moving The last piece that's very important was, we had a very productive meeting with Power School. Mr. Michael Azak and his team were a little concerned that they weren't meeting some of the data implementation and ingesting into Power School. Had a very at-length meeting with them at the end of last week, and they are actually going to be giving us more personnel on that side, as well as an incident tracking module. Up until this point, it's been all done via email. So if Brian's team, or I, or anyone at Central Admin had an issue, we'd be sending an email. Now everything is going to be done in a portal, so that it's tracked, it's given a correct timeline, and we, at the district level, can see it through, and Power School can also give us a, you know, a more in-depth timeline. Up until this point, like I said, it's been emails, so it's cleaning up the process. They basically told us they have no issue with getting our data for July 1st. We're going to actually now meet weekly, I am going to meet weekly with their team and our team, to make sure that everything that Mr. Michael Azak has as a concern is dealt with, and that we are ready to go live for July 1st. Other than that, you have some other, you know, just weekly, monthly pieces that we've been talking about in the PACE Subcommittee. There haven't been many other real changes. We're continuing to do our due diligence to make sure that we are live for July 1st, and you're going to start hearing a lot about training moving forward. Brian's team has a lot of training lined up for the summer for all the stakeholders in the district.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Any questions for Mr. Cabral? Ms. Roderick.
Not a question, just a comment. I just wanted to point out that Mr. Cabral and Mr. Michael Azak's teams have, I just want to acknowledge the fact that they have been working hard and diligently and have provided consistent updates, and I think in an age where everybody's looking for that honesty and transparency and consistency, that their teams have provided that.
Appreciate that.
I yield.
Anything further? Thank you, Mr. Cabral. 12.8 is a discussion and vote to approve the technology salary matrix as referred by the Technology Subcommittee and presented by Scott Cabral, Chief Information Officer.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Mr. Cabral.
I'll be brief with this as well. What I did, when I became CIO, we looked at the bigger picture, that, you know, the pieces that we needed to become more efficient with all of the technology and all of the upgrades that we've done in the district. I basically looked at all of our surrounding districts, district of our size, and these salary ranges will not only allow us to attract new personnel, but will also allow us to maintain the people that we've trained and that have become excellent employees. In the past, we've trained employees, and they've jumped ship after 18 to 24 months because we've trained them so well, and they're able to get more money elsewhere. This will allow us to keep our personnel in-house, it will allow us to sustain ourselves from within, and I'm very excited to see with additional personnel where, you know, technology services can take the district moving forward.
Any questions for Mr. Cabral?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Agia.
Not so much a question, just a comment. I want to thank Mr. Cabral for his hard work on all technology issues. I agree with Mrs. Roderick's that that committee and that group has been doing yeoman's work over the last several months, so I do appreciate it. With all of these new positions, I mentioned earlier in my Subcommittee report, as well as at the meeting, I believe that we need to look at making these positions union positions. The reason for that is, we have, every two years, we just keep on changing, oh, we'll do a contract, we'll try to match up to what we make in the other surrounding communities, and it's not helping us to keep our talent. We can have it in a union where they're going to look at all of the year-round supports and all that, so I am in favor of it, but Mr. Cabral or Superintendent Potts, if they're going to look at making these into the union legitimately.
If I can just add to that, we actually are meeting with the bargaining unit, FRA is that you're referring to, to look through each of the job descriptions to see if they fit. I know that Mr. Cabral has some reservations about some of those positions, because they, of their, of the expectation, the flexibility and the requirements for their employment, because they're 12-month positions, et cetera, so, but we are exploring that, and we're going to do our due diligence to see what should be and what doesn't be, shouldn't be, and Mr. Cabral will be included in that, as well as Mr. Coogan and myself and Attorney Assad will have that discussion.
I just want to make sure that, and I've said this a bunch of times, when you look at whether a position's union or not, it's not only about whether a job description fits with the current job descriptions. If that was the case, we wouldn't have four different units in the FREA. So the requirement to look at that has nothing to do with whether it fits into existing positions. People have a right to bargain, and we should do our due diligence to at least offer that to see if it works for the best interest of the union as well as the school department.
Right, I think that that's exactly true. We have to see if it fits in the best interest of what we're looking for, the position. So maybe I misspoke. I'm talking about whether it fits into what we anticipate, what we want from that position. So absolutely, we'll have that discussion and figure out what our needs are and where we go from there.
Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Ms. Jahaar.
Yes.
Ms. LaRivee.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. 12.9 is a discussion and vote to approve the 2022 one-time assistance for districts with pandemic-related enrollment disruptions impacting Chapter 78 in the amount of $1.267, $376,000, I mean, million dollars, as presented by Maria Potts, Superintendent of Schools.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve and spend the money to fix the Durfee Athletic Fields.
Second. Second, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
Two motions?
Correct.
Okay. We have a motion to approve it, and we have a second by Ms. Roderick's. So we have to approve the money first, and that's what we'll do now. Any discussion on approving the money? Deb, please call the roll.
The motion reads to approve the money and spend it on, in one motion, on the athletic fields at Durfee High School.
Well, we had a motion and a second, Kev, before you said that.
One motion.
You can make that motion.
That was my original motion.
After we accept the money, you can make that motion.
I made the motion. That's not accurate.
But we had a motion.
You can make a motion and spend the money in one motion.
Mr. Agia.
The money is already in the Florida School Department, Mr. Mayor.
Well, actually, what would happen, Mr. Agia, was we had a motion by Mr. Hart and a second by Ms. Roderick's to accept the money. Your motion for expending it wherever you want can be made after we accept the money.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Maybe there's a delay, but I definitely made the motion before anyone talked about it. So we'll chalk it up to being a delay. But on the motion.
Go ahead, Ms. Roderick.
So when I was looking, I thought we were accepting the money first.
Yes.
And then decide how to spend it.
We'll decide how to spend it.
So what I am seconding is, we are receiving the money and then having, I just want to make sure I'm accurate.
Yeah, that's exactly what I just said.
Okay.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Agia.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Ms. Jahaar.
Yes.
Ms. LaRivee.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
Yes. I'm going to turn the gavel over to Mr. Hart. I'd like to make a motion to use this money on the city side.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
He already has a motion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Agia.
I ask to be recognized before you get the gavel over.
Okay, go ahead.
Commandeecy and courtesy.
I said, go ahead.
I know it might be difficult with the way that the, being online, so the bottom line is, before we look at any kind of issues with this money, I want to make it very clear to the committee, to the public, that I've been sitting for several months with Mr. Pacico and various stakeholders relative to the Durfee Athletic Fields. At every single meeting that we've had, every single meeting, it has been stated, for the record, by myself, Mr. Pacico, and anybody else that's there, that we have $0, $0 for the athletic fields at Durfee High School. Zero. That's the reason why this money needs to go towards the fields, because we do not have unlimited resources. Any and all one-time monies should go towards the Durfee Athletic Fields. I sit in these meetings, and there's $5 or $6 million worth of fields that needs to get done, and we do not have any money put aside for those fields. The $263 million Durfee project did not include any, so for anyone up on that stage to say that there's money for the fields, that's not an accurate statement. We have $0. Mr. Pacico knows it, Superintendent knows it, and anybody that's been sitting on that committee, the athletic director, the principal of the high school, the assistant athletic director, everyone knows that we don't have any money for the fields. But every time we come to this meeting, we're going to have the chairman want to take school department funds and resources for the schools and take it to put on his side of the budget for transportation. And I think that's quite frankly unacceptable for any member of this committee to sit there and say, you're here for the kids and the school department, to continue to have to listen to this all the time, when meanwhile, we don't have any money for the fields. We have $0 for the fields, just so everyone's aware. Turf B, the practice field, is not going to be allowed to be played on in September unless it somehow passes a safety test. If we don't pass money to pay for these fields today, we run the risk of not having programs at Durfee High School in August and September, and that's a fact. at Durfee High School in August and September, and that's a fact. I've sat in meetings and hours upon hours to try to get this done, and there's zero dollars. That's why I make the motion to spend this money on the Durfee Athletic Fields. Every one-time money that we have needs to go towards those fields rather than keep going back to the taxpayers. I make that in the form of a motion, and I was definitely ahead of when the mayor wanted to pass the gavel.
Hearing no second, I will.
Whoa, 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 just normally, I just want to throw something out. Normally, when we say that we're making a motion, there's usually a response, right, but in all fairness, usually there's a, do I hear a second?
Do I hear a second?
So, that's how, yes, we hear a second.
Okay, I have a second from Ms. Rodriks. I have a motion and a second. I just want to make one thing perfectly clear. Every year, the city spends 2.1 million dollars, give or take a little, on non-mandated busing for our students. It's not required by law, it's not in any of the bills, and the city has probably done this to the tune of 15 to 20 million dollars over the last five to 10 years. The school department, in its wisdom, in partnering with the city, put money into the road at Henry Lloyd, put money into the parking at Talbot, all non-student-centered things as much as a bus ride for kids to get to school. We're asking for some relief this year. We have reduced our ask from the 2 million that we wanted from Esser down to this 1.26 late-arriving money. One of the questions was, the money's already been allocated, the money's already been allocated, we heard that when the argument wasn't as strong. Now, the money has not been allocated. This is money that can go to help the city, it can go to help especially our grade seven and eight students get back and forth to school on a bus, that the city is under no obligation to pay for, but does every year to help the schools while the school goes over and above to help the city. This is a partnership. Mr. Aguirre has his pick of where he wants the money spent on fields, and I respect that. I worked at Durfee longer than anybody in this room tonight, and I have utmost respect for what goes on at Durfee and utmost respect for what goes on at sports. I'm at more, more events than most people here, but at the same time, the city continues to support the schools in their way, the schools continue to support the city in its way. This is an opportunity to help the city with school transportation. We were at a meeting this morning, Ms. Rodriks was there, where simply the, the Boys and Girls Club was talking about the rapid increase in transportation costs. You sat there, Ms. Rodriks, you heard it, I heard it too. This is an opportunity to not take care of kids that are just sports-specific, but to take care of all kids, to transport as many students as possible through and from schools. We don't have any obligation to do this, the state law does not mandate it, we try to help, and we're trying to pitch in, just as the schools have pitched into us with the roads that they thought were important for Henry Lloyd and Talbot. This is a give and take. My point would be, this is an opportunity for undirected money to go help the city, fulfill its obligations to transport kids, and that's all I'm talking about here. Anybody that thinks a baseball field or a soccer field is more important to school attendance than a bus ride back and forth for a seventh, eighth, ninth, 10th, or 11th, or 12th grader, I disagree. The fields have to be done. I haven't heard one person on this panel talk against the fields. And Mr. Aguirre thinks sometimes that if he talks louder and he talks more forceful and he says he's passionate, it will win the day, but I beg to differ. I think a kid on a bus going to and from school is as important as all sports, and I'm asking respectfully for this committee to support the city on this side, just like we did with Henry Lloyd Road and with Talbot, and that's where I sit. And again, I have no problem with Mr. Aguirre's opinion that the, that the field should be done, it's just, right now, I'm asking for some support.
Mr. Mayor, tell us how much money's there then.
Mr. Aguirre.
Mr. Mayor, tell us how much money is in the budget for the fields.
Mr. Aguirre, I did not interrupt you, so again, we don't need to treat each other like that. I'd like to finish talking, please. My point is.
When she's done, please recognize me.
Again, please let me finish, Mr. Aguirre, thank you. This is something where we partner with the city, like we did on the roads, like we did on the parking lot, and like we'll end up doing probably on the fields. Whatever we have to do going forward to get these things done, they will all be done. But at this opportunity, I think it's important to acknowledge the commitment the city has made to the schools in the form of the $2 million unmandated transportation cost every year, and I think we should look to support the city a little bit on this side, and I see nothing wrong with it. I hope the committee, in its wisdom, thinks transporting kids to school is as important as a field, which I also think is important because I support sports, like I said, as much as I can, and I hope that in their wisdom, they see that the person that talks the loudest or the person that talks the most is not always correct. This is the right move for the schools, this is the right move for the city. Mr. Aguirre.
Mr. Mayor, I have one question for you. How much money is put aside for the Durfee Athletic Fields right now?
I don't know.
Did you tell any member of this committee that the money is there for the fields? Yes or no?
I never remember saying that.
Did you lobby anybody on that committee to try to get the votes for this 1.3 million? Have you had a conversation with any other member of the school committee?
No more than, no more than your phone calls to them back and forth.
So have you, have you or have you not?
Excuse me?
I said, have you or have you not?
As I said, no more than your phone calls.
Have you spoken to four members of the committee?
Mr. Aguirre, your phone calls was probably ahead of mine.
Okay, so you, so you're telling us that you did call around trying to get the votes?
I followed your phone calls.
Madam Superintendent, Madam Superintendent, I would like to get your opinion on this, as well as whether maybe you can enlighten us on how much money is available for the Durfee Athletic Fields, since the mayor says one thing, and then he now says he doesn't know.
Well, currently, we don't have any money set aside for the Durfee fields.
Zero. So you agree when I said, as the mayor would want to say, very passionately or forcefully or whatever he wanted to try to say? Am I making an accurate statement that there's zero dollars for the fields?
At this time, yes.
Can I call Mr. Pacico to the podium?
Yes.
Mr. Pacico, I know we've sat at many meetings where it has been determined that we do not have any direct funds right now to fund the fields, and I appreciate your hard work over the last several months, working with me and the other colleagues, to try to get a plan in place to pay for some of these fields. But I want to stress to the commit, to the community, and since the mayor thinks that I'm not telling accurate information, I'd like you to try to present to the committee the dire straits that we're in at Durfee High School related to the second turf field, as well as whether you can indicate whether there's money to fund all these fields.
So, Mr. Aguirre, the money we have to fund the fields is 2.4 million dollars borrowed by the City Council for the baseball field. Those funds we do have available. We have a small amount of funds that I'm protecting in the construction project, a small amount, a half a million dollars, which won't go very far, but a half a million dollars, and we have monies that I would love to lobby for on the agenda tonight and at the City Council tomorrow night that I would like to lobby for, but if, but if my, your question is, do we have money for the fields right now, the answer's no.
And if we completed the project with the requisite fields, for instance, if we had two softball fields before, we should have two softball fields. If we had enough soccer fields, baseball fields, and the like, what would the estimate be for how many millions of dollars in order to fully fund all of those?
Close to 10 million.
And we might have 500,000, assuming we get ledge and other, at the building project.
There's some.
Can you just repeat that, did you say 10 million?
Yeah, it's approximately 10 million dollars, and I'm including the 2.4, I'm including the 2.4, and I'm including the fields, the proposed fields at the Talbot, the softball field and the baseball field at Talbot.
When you look at the turf B.
Yes.
For the edification of my colleagues, will you please explain the dire straits of turf B, which is the second turf field at Durfee?
So turf B is, is the practice field at Durfee, it is the field that's most used of the two, of the two turf fields that we currently have, the stadium field being the second one, and it is, we will be performing very shortly a GMAX test which determines whether or not the field is playable by certain sports. So not all sports are eliminated from it, but contact sports are, so that, we're waiting, we will be doing that test soon, so that when the season, when that field is being used in the coming season, it will be, it will be safe for students to play on. If this.
So at the meeting last?
If I could, just one second, Ms. Aguirre.
Sure.
The, the field was tested last year, and the two fields passed. The, again, the company that does the testing did say that the test for the turf field B, the practice field, was in tough shape.
Yeah, so I agree with, with that. The only thing I would add is, at the meeting, the gentleman basically said, that field's not going to pass. He also said, we can try to do it, you know, and we're putting him in a tough spot because that field, if anybody's walked out there, it's like walking on cement. That field is four years beyond its useful life, and I don't think the urgency is there for my colleagues necessarily, if they're not part of this discussions, and to know the background on why these are very important issues. So if that turf B is not able to be safely utilized, I heard the Athletic Director and the Assistant Athletic Director talk about the mess that it's going to be at Durfee High School in the fall, for three soccer teams, three football teams, cross-country or whoever else, they're not going to have anywhere to practice, because the baseball field's going to be under construction, and they're not going to have anywhere to practice. So I think it's very important, and the reason why I think this needs to happen is because if we don't have the money allocated, you can't go out to bid, and if we wait another month, we're going to run the risk of not being allowed to make that field potentially converted with a new turf field by September, and I think the urgency needs to be there on this committee. Now, we talk about transportation, the mayor wants to talk about whether we're going to transport students. We have asked the mayor and the city, are they proposing not to transport the students at Durfee High School? How about the middle school? We're not going to transport them either. We're not going to transport students that they so-called say are unnecessary or not legal, but who the heck is thinking that? We've all agreed, including the mayor, at pri, at private meetings, prior meetings, that the money is going to be there because we have to transport these children. We have an attendance problem already, and the mayor's saying frivolously that we can just do without 2.7 million dollars? Oh, that's extra money. You shouldn't have to pay that. That's basic transportation that's been provided to these students for 10 years, 20 years? It's actually a joke to even consider that, and then we're going to give away money in the school department with no plan in the future for how that's going to go. So the mayor's going to take the one-time money, pad his budget, and then, and then do what in the future years? The city has money, we were at a joint council meeting, all of us on this stage were here, the mayor and the rest of his administrative team said they were flush with money. What the heck happened different now? Now all of a sudden, we need this? The city has 10 million dollars in unallocated funds. Why don't they use that? Nope, let's go after the school department, and let's try and snooker the school committee into giving away 1.2 million dollars when we have needs. I firmly believe that if we go to the City Council, City Councilors know there's not money, they're not flush, they're not going to agree to bond more money. These fields, my colleagues, these fields are going to be on us to fund somehow in the school department. The City Council's not going to agree to fund more and go back to the taxpayers again and again and again. We are only losing our opportunity to not use this money to pay for the fields. And once again, I can tell you with certainty, I watched the meeting, the mayor said, oh, I'm going to fund the transportation, we, of course, we got to transport kids, but just give me the 1.3. The city budget's not even done yet. The legislature hasn't even given away their budget to know how much money the city's going to get in funds or extra funds. The mayor told me right out that the senator told them they were going to try to increase money on the city side. So let's give the 1.2 now and then see them get more money. Put in the cart before the horse, and we have 10 million dollars in needs up at that high school, and for anybody to vote against that, it's a, it's a damn shame. With that, I yield.
Thank you. I do want to clear up a couple things. We went back, nobody from the city side said flush, the word was used by one of the counselors in a question. The city budget is done, it's out, it's, was delivered last week. So when you base your comments on things that are not accurate, then that's what you're going to get. It's my position that if the city, I mean, if the state reimburses the city to a tune that's a heck of a lot more, then we will adjust and help. It's my point right now, though, is to wrap yourselves around baseball fields, softball fields, when kids every single day from the South End, from the Flint, need a ride to school, and the city has consistently gone over and above on bus funding to help the kids, to ask for a one-time relief. We got a million dollars a year or two ago for public safety that we used for our police and fire. This is the same principle. This 1.257 million will help with our bus transportation bill, which is at least 11 million dollars, if not going up on some fuel assessments, and it is important that we take care of all the kids, not just the athletes, which I have the utmost respect of, because obviously, I'm, I'm married to a, one of the top athletes in the city, but let's be real here, every single day, these kids are on the corner waiting for a bus. So you're going to put, you're going to pit because you want to win an argument when you're saying things that aren't even accurate. My point is that transporting kids is as important as any field, and when all you want to talk about is some fields versus every day, day in, day out, transportation to school, late buses, truant buses, those are things are also important in education, and I'm asking for some one-time relief on that, and if, as we sit here right now, the state does something with UGHA and there's a way to help, I will be glad to pitch in on those fields. Everybody knows, I'm, I attend probably more sporting events at Durfee and other schools than, than most people in this auditorium, so I have the utmost respect for athletes. I think we should support them, but at the same time, I have the utmost respect for kids trying to get to and from school, and to try to turn this into some kind of twisted, oh, what about this, did you say zero? My point is very clear, we're asking for one-time relief to get some buses. If my unrestricted aid money comes through, as some people have suggested, I will be glad to come back here and work with this school committee to support those fields any way I can, and we may do it anyway, but at this time, I'm asking for the committee to vote to transfer this money to the city to help with school transportation, period. Anything further, Ms. Rodriks?
Uh, go ahead, Mimi, you can go first.
I just question for Mr. Pacico. So, Mr. Pacico, so you just said 10 million dollars, that kind of came out at me kind of quick, right? So, counting the 2.4 that we borrowed for the baseball field?
Take the 2, right, take the 2.4 off of that.
So that's 7.6, right? About 7.6. So, add the 1.2, we're down to 6, about, it's terrible, don't go math with me, Kevin. So, what is the 1.2 going to do for these fields? Like, what is taking precedence right now?
When you add the 1.2 to the 1.4 that's on the agenda later on, another 850,000 that's in the City Council, we're getting pretty close to a number that we can get comfortable with. So my ultimate goal, obviously, is to do as much field as I can, however, we set our sights on the ones that we know we could do. We do have, we do have to get them out soon in order to make sure that we can get something done. I, I can't guarantee anyone that even if we made a decision tomorrow. I, I can't guarantee anyone that even if we made a decision tomorrow, I wouldn't be able to, I may not be able to get the practice field done, just because of supply chain, the bidding process. So it's all, all of the work that we have is, is subject to, to the procurement process, which is pretty lengthy. However, that is the pipeline of, of what needs to be done. In the order, it needs to be finished. So we have a field up on the hill, which is the all-purpose field, which will be the girls varsity softball field. And the outside, the outfield of that, not the outfield of that field, but the remaining land that's left up on the hill will be for all the field events, from the track and field, and then the JV, I'm sorry, the turf B would be soccer and football practice. And I'm not sure field hockey will play there, or they'll play in the stadium. So that's the, the order of magnitude. And then the baseball field will definitely be going out very shortly.
So in regards to practice fields, there, it, it's a good possibility in September, we don't have any?
If, if the G max test fails, then I can't play contact sports on it. So soccer would have to be moved to the varsity, to the stadium, or things like that. And that is not, I, I won't know that till we actually do the test. We do grooming, there'll be grooming done before. We do the test on both fields. The, the varsity field, the, I'm sorry, the, I keep calling it the varsity field, but the stadium will need to be groomed also, to get that one ready for the fall. And the field, field turf B would be groomed, as we do each year, to see if it has life left in it to play contact sports.
So what measures were going to be taken, or pretend this 1.2 didn't happen, okay? It doesn't exist right now. What were we doing to get these kids on the field?
We would have to make decisions as to where, what we would do. For instance, the upper field, we may not be able to do. We would have to push our resources.
And the upper field is, sorry, is softball, correct?
The upper field is, is, is varsity softball.
Mm-hmm.
So there would be decisions that we'd have to make, in, in the order of, of priority, as to what we had to do. Again, the hope is that the conversation that's, that's coming on the 1.4 million dollars will help. Some of the, the, some of my issues coming up are the fact that all of the pricing is a moving target. The, the baseball field at 2.4 million dollars is probably more like 2.8 now, because of, you know, the fuel charges and, and manufacturing issues. So all of those things are coming into play. So I don't have the, the comfort of saying, "I got 2.4 from the city, and I can do the baseball fields, I don't have to worry about that." That's not the case. So I need to be sure that I can finish that field, completely finish that field, and move on to the next one. So it would change the order in which we would do things. And the upper fields, my issue with the upper field is, it's going to be a dust bowl. So one way or another, I have to do something with that field. So if I don't do anything with it, I plant grass on it, not that we can play on it, not that we can practice on it, but I would plant grass to hold the, the soil in place, so that it isn't a dust bowl, and we would cut the grass and not use that field until we had the funds to do what we need to do. So that's the.
Right.
Juggling act that we're doing. And the fields were never part of the, of the project, except for that upper field. That was the only field that was included in the project. We also hit some ledges of late, up on that area, doing the utility work, and that's a concern, to be sure that we don't get ourselves into a position that I don't have any funds left over, which is why we, we're committing $500 of, $500,000 of the remaining funds in the Durfee project as a whole, to help us out with the field construction.
I, I yield for now. I yield for now.
Anything further? Ms. Rodriks?
It, it takes a lot for me to get really heated about something, I guess, but the one thing that really I see as a problem is a level of disrespect, right? And, and that's kind of what we've had here during parts of this discussion. So I'm having a really hard time reconciling this idea of comparing, redoing the fields to, "We're going to transport students because we really don't have to, but we've been doing it." That feels very manipulative to other folks. And, and I see the looks of confusion, but what, but when we're, when we're saying things like, "Okay, well, I guess the fields are more important than the students, you know, I think transporting our sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students, you know, our, our seventh and eighth grade students are more important than the fields," that's not a fair statement. It's not an either-or, right? And so then I, I also get into the issue of, just say you had this one-time money, I asked a month ago how this would be helpful, specifically helpful, in writing, "How is this going to directly support the taxpayers?" And I haven't gotten an answer on that. I'm one of those taxpayers. I said it before, I'll say it again, I made $21,000 last year. My husband makes about $75,000. I, along with every other taxpaying person in this community, needs a break, absolutely. But I want to know how that's going to help me. I need to see that in writing, how that's going to be supportive. We keep doing this thing where we're saying the city, the, the school department has all this extra money. This is not extra money. This is money that we were underfunded for so long. And anyone that's been in this community knows that we have been underfunded for so long. So some of this is reimbursement money because of low enrollments, right? And so I have a really hard time when folks start saying, "Oh, this is extra money, this is extra money." It's not extra money. Some of this money is a result of the pandemic, some of this money is due to, due to the low enrollment because of the pandemic. And a good chunk of this money, which I think we keep forgetting, is because of the significantly high needs of our students. So to use the, "Oh, well, it's about, you know, oh, I guess, you know, the fields are more important," that's not a fair statement. It's not that the fields are more important, it's that we're talking about, we sat in a meeting this morning, and you referenced that, we did, but our conversation was not about school transportation, our, our issues were about the infrastructure that we have, where we can't get students from the South End to the North End to get to activities after school. And yes, the cost of transportation is really high, but that wasn't the conversation that we were having, and I want to be very clear about that. It was about the activities that we need to get our kids to and from. So if we're talking about not redoing the fields, we're pulling an activity from our kids. I just want to be clear about that. I think we all know that if I had my way, and I had 1.2 or whatever million dollars we're, we're playing with here, I would invest it all in SEO, right? But I know that's not necessarily the right answer either, because it has to be something sustainable. And right now, I'm not hearing how allocating that money to transportation is sustainable. What are we doing next year? When my ta- my taxes are going up next year, what are we doing? So I'm, I'm just having a really hard time when we're talking about this. And as far as the city budget being flush, since that has been brought up many times, Council Vice President Dion did ask specifically if the city budget was flush. And the answer from every person at that table was yes. And so again, I struggle with, how can I be told yes a month ago that the city has money, and now be told I don't have money? So this is where I struggle.
Well, the struggle.
And I yield.
On one thing I do want to clear up, when someone says, "Your budget is flush," I thought they meant balanced. It's not flush, all we have to do is deliver a balanced budget, that's what we're referring to. The word flush was not used by anybody at our table, that's all I said. I did not, I did not disagree with Ms., Mrs. Dion, it was that the city budget was balanced. And that's what we're working towards. And if we get some support and to say, pit one thing against the other, is what I heard before I opened my mouth.
I didn't hear that.
I did, I, I mean, I heard, "Let's do this, let's do that." My, my point is, this is one-time money. Of course, I think the fields are important. My ties to Durfee are extremely deep, I was there this morning, I'll be there Thursday. I will not do anything to harm the kids at that school. And as I said before, if the state increases the unrestricted aid to a point where we can shuffle money back to the schools for the fields, then that's going to happen. That's how I operate. I'm asking for this support now, and going forward, as Mr. Pacheco said himself, we'll see how we get this done, but we'll do our best to get it done. Right now, I was asking for support on transportation.
So I have one more question. So are you saying specifically that if you don't get the money for transportation, that you are not going to transport our grade seven through 12 students?
What I'm saying is, it's extremely difficult to take money over and above the state guidelines to transport students year in, year out. And at this time, I think this is an opportunity to help the city this time. That's what I'm saying. Every year, we do it, as you're aware, Ms. Rodriks, and I don't see any reason to continue not doing it. But at the same time, to give our residents of Fall River across the spectrum some relief for one year is not the worst thing we can do as a committee.
You are absolutely right, it's not. But again, I asked a month ago for how that's going to help me directly.
You asked me?
At this meeting, I asked, can I have in writing how that will help us directly? I sat here and said, "I make $21,000 a year." I think I've repeated that multiple times. If there's any resident in the city that does not know that that is how much money I make, I would be shocked. But I asked directly how that's going to help my wallet in my house, because I am in the same boat as every other taxpayer here.
So we have a motion from Mr. Aguirre.
Mr. Chairman?
To use the funds for fields, Mr. Aguirre.
Just a couple of follow-ups. So, Madam Superintendent, can you tell us what the language says in the indirect cost agreement related to one-time capital expenses?
I don't have.
Or one of your designees?
I, I don't have it with me right now, Mr. Aguirre.
So, so the.
I can, I can quote it, and you can tell me if I'm wrong.
So the language requires a vote from the school committee?
Mr., Mr. Almeda has it.
It's a requirement for a vote from the school committee.
For what?
To make it eligible for net school.
How does $150,000 play in?
To make it eligible for net school spending.
And therefore, typically, it's a voluntary thing on the school committee. If it's over, then we're going to allow that.
Yes, it is.
Correct?
Correct.
Now, I recall at the joint meeting in front of all the city councillors, school committee, mayor, and all of his team, you had a slide-up that showed how much money we've actually spent on major projects. Do you recall how much that was?
Uh, just, ju- just over the past year, it was over $3 million.
$3 million that we, we, the school committee voluntarily chose to pay, because we didn't want to hit the city with over $150,000, which we could have very easily. How much money are we going to spend in our ESTA funds to do capital projects that are over $150,000 and we're not required to do?
We have.
That's the city expense. How mu- how many do?
We have 17 million committed to HVAC projects.
And it would out of vote of the committee, that would fall on the city to replace, correct?
Yes, sir.
The, when you look at the one-time funds, the use of one-time funds should be for capital projects, which is, I think, what you and the superintendent have recommended, so I totally agree with it. Madam Superintendent, I, I met with you two weeks ago, related to the sustainability of such, using one-time funds. And I'm going to make a statement, and please correct me if I'm wrong. In that meeting, I determined, and I, and I suggested to you, that using one-time funds is not going to help us long-term on the city's side, that we needed to look at ways to help long-term, to have a strategy to help long-term with the school budget, how it can help the city. And I suggested at that time, that rather than worrying about a one-time funds, that we should look to potentially crossing guards, maybe one of the police officers, in reopening the indirect cost agreement. So maybe we could give the city $400,000 for 10 years, 20 years, as long as we had the agreement, rather than a one-time funds. Is anything I'm saying not accurate?
No, that's correct.
And can you tell the committee whether you had a conversation with the mayor after that?
Yes, we did talk about whether we should open up the indirect cost, and we actually discussed the crossing guards and trash. We, we talked about any options that we could include in the indirect cost agreement to alleviate some of the costs.
Is it on the agenda today to reopen the indirect cost agreement?
It is not.
So I've asked the mayor at three subsequent meetings, are we going to open up the indirect cost agreement? The answer was no, three different times. What I recommended to the superintendent and Mr. Pacheco was that we look into that, so that if we can have long-term assistance to the city. Now, we're going to turn around and say, "We're going to give away 1.2 million," well, then why would we reopen? To give away more money? So logically, it would make sense to do something long-term related to helping the city with the finances. I know we've had that discussion, I don't believe for a second that the superintendent feels this is a good thing to transfer 1.3 million. I don't believe that for a second. And if, if I'm wrong, please correct me, Ms. But as superintendent of schools, I don't think you would be advocating for us to move this 1.3 million in school funds over to the city. My last point is on the, what Ms. Rodriks talked about, the mayor did say at multiple meetings, "We're going to transport the kids because that's what we have to do." He said that at multiple meetings, over and over. And now all of a sudden, we're going to figure out, well, it might have been, if the mayor wants to go on record, or anybody on this committee wants to go on record, and saying, "We don't believe the kids should be transported," feel free to take a vote. That's not what anybody's saying. It's the duty and responsibility of the mayor and the city to pay for all transportation, period. Period. That's the duty of the city. And it's the duty of the school committee, and I do share a responsibility to advocate for the projects within the school department. That's why I'm asking my colleagues to vote yes. I yield.
So we have a motion from Mr. Aguirre, seconded by Ms. Rodriks, to use the 1.2 million for the fields. Deb, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Aguirre.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
No.
Mr. Harp.
No.
Ms. Larve.
No.
Ms. Pereira.
Ms. Rodriks?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
No.
Really quick.
My, my motion, Mr. Bailey?
If I could talk, to be honest, I would like more time to digest what's going on. Would I be able to table it to actually have more time? Is that possible?
Motion to table?
I would second that.
I know, I know, we just voted something down. I might, I, I was waiting to make my motion, because Ms. Rodriks and Mr. Aguirre. I'd like to go forward, I have a motion. Now, what is it?
If, if it's a table, just a vote on the, on whether or not the table, if it doesn't pass, then you make your vote.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. So we have a motion to table by Mr. Bailey. Any discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Ms. Aguirre.
Yes.
Mr. Bailey.
Yes.
Mr. Harp.
No.
Ms. Larve.
Yes.
Ms. Pereira.
Yes.
Mayor Coogan.
No.
Motion passes to table.
1210, second read and vote to approve updated language on the following policies. Who's talking on this?
Tom.
Motion to approve? Motion to approve all policies as written? I have a, a motion to approve all policies.
Mr. Coogan. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on any policy specifically, please?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Aguirre.
I would just like to say that after the suggestions at the last meeting, to clarify the bullying policy relative to adults to adults, adults to students and anybody, has been clarified and highlighted in the policy. So I do appreciate Superintendent taking that feedback, and Mr. Coogan, Mr. Tom Coogan, and bringing that back. So I will be supporting, but I want to acknowledge that he did take our feedback and highlighted that. With that, I yield, thank you.
So, Mr. Aguirre's point was that the bullying policy has been modified. Anything further on the policies? I would have a, a vote, Deb, please.
Ms. Rodriks has a.
Oh, Ms. Rodriks, I'm sorry.
I, I was just double-checking, because I know we had talked. I was just double-checking, because I know we had talked about the sexual harassment policy, and I don't remember seeing it early. Okay, never mind. I just reviewed again. I reviewed it earlier, but I see the part about, we were talking about making sure that it wasn't just the person, that it was directed to, that it included others, but that's in there. So I yield.
Any further discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre? Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rogics?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes.
Twelve-eleven is a discussion and vote to approve the naming, renaming committee members as referred by the Facilities and Operations Subcommittee and presented by Ken Pacico, the chief operating officer.
Motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve, and do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the naming renaming committee?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Aguirre.
Yes, I just got a chance to take a look at this. We did have some situations with the naming, and there was a problem over the last year, in my opinion. And I suggested to the superintendent at the time that there needs to be some vetting before things come forth. So I do agree that there needs to be some vetting. Where I disagree is, I think the vetting should be done by the superintendent or the people that are working in the school department before it goes to any outside community. Because I think part of a naming has to be a more comprehensive policy, so that if someone is going to name something that the superintendent doesn't think fits, she should be able to not have to bring that forth. So I think there needs to be a double process, which I don't see listed here. I do think I trust the superintendent. If she felt that somebody was deserving of recognition to name or rename something, the due diligence should be by a full-time school department employee, superintendent and her designees, rather than giving it out to someone that's gonna potentially put people on the spot. And that's what happened in the last case, and I do think that we need to correct. We can't go back and take back votes that we've taken in the past. But I do think there needs to be this where the superintendent has an input before it gets to the full committee. I haven't had a chance to review this and talk to her, but I would like to make a motion that we table this until next meeting to allow the superintendent to bring a more comprehensive plan.
I have a, you second his motion?
There was a motion already and seconded.
There was a motion already, Kevin, and seconded to move it.
Yeah, well, I did was make a motion to table.
Table override.
That's all. If anybody wants to second it, fine. If not, so be it. That takes precedence.
I'll second the table, only, but with a question, okay? So is it accurate? I thought we did say that the first request would go to the school department, and then that request would go to the naming committee. Is that inaccurate? Because that's what Mr. Aguirre is...
It is the intent. So if further than this particular letter, in the documents that we drew up, if that's not the case, then we can make a correction in that and make it so that the first step would be superintendent or her designee, and then move forward to this committee if that...
Right. I mean, can we just switch the motion and make a motion that all requests go to the superintendent or designate, then to this committee? Can we just make that motion?
You could amend the motion.
Amend the motion.
Well, we have a few motions going at once now. We have the original motion, we have a motion to table, and now we have a motion to amend.
Well, I guess we could remove the motion to table if we amend the motion.
All right, so why don't we take, Bruce, should we take a vote on the motion to table?
I would, yeah.
I would. Okay, Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Aguirre?
The only thing, I was just reading the one-page document that came in. That's where I was getting this info. So if the superintendent is stating something otherwise, is then I'll, my motion to table. But I haven't heard her say that that's the, I thought we needed more time to go back and review that piece of it. Is that what I'm not hearing, or?
Kevin, we do have more documents that go, so this was just the naming. We were looking for the board to approve this naming. However, there was documents that went along with this originally, and that had a little more language to it. For instance, the person should be deceased, all kinds of different criteria that would be used to allow a person to have something, you know, memorialized. So I think that that other document could be, I think the other document just could be with a motion to say that that is the first, the first step would be superintendent's approval, and then moving to this committee second.
But we never voted on that yet? Is that, where are these documents that you're talking about?
It's a policy that was, it was, it would have gone out with this originally, and that would have been November-ish, if I'm not mistaken, November, December.
Yeah, it sounds like, it sounds like there's more to it that we would, you know, need to get. So I'm gonna leave my motion to table and hope that we can come back next month with a comprehensive, step-by-step process.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Yep.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. All right, so we tabled it. Twelve-twelve is a discussion and vote to approve the laborer job description as referred by the Facilities and Operations Subcommittee and presented by Ken Pacico, chief operating officer.
So during the budget deliberations, we, as part of the maintenance unit, I had asked for a laborer's position to be added within that unit. And that laborer's position is outlined in the job description, that we added the position, we have a dollar amount that we are going to use in the contract that currently exists. It's called tradesman. If I'm not mistaken, it's eighteen dollars and thirty-two cents, maybe? I'm not positive on that. But it's eighteen dollars and change. So the ultimate goal, as I said that night, and is to allow the tradesmen ones, twos, the craftsmen, to allow them to work on the projects that need to be worked on, and have this laborer's position as an ancillary system to provide both manpower to that particular job when needed, or to allow this person to do the setups, tear downs, cleanup, demolition, the running to and from supply houses with material, and allowing the higher-paid tradespeople to stay in their roles. We also would like to use this position as a pipeline for possibly the construction craft laborers program at Durfee, and take a student on co-op, so to speak, and have them train, and hopefully find a career in one of these trades or as a laborer, whichever that student would like to do.
Any discussion on the laborer's position?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Aguirre?
Just a quick question. I support the position entry level. Did we look at how this position's gonna be paid relative to the custodians, and where it fits into the...
The salary range?
The tradesman.
The tradesman position?
What I'm concerned about is somebody, you know... Go ahead, sorry.
No, no, I think it's equal. It's actually a little less than custodial starting position. And I don't believe that it would be a landing spot for anyone in that union. However, you know, that may be, it could be in someone's wheelhouse. I don't know that. It would not be closed, obviously, to anyone.
So you currently have, you currently have a position called tradesperson?
There's a position in the maintenance union, in the maintenance division of that union that is called tradesman. And it's the lowest paid...
Could it be possible that we support this position and have Attorney Assad work that out to make sure that we've dotted our i's and crossed our t's relative to the union?
So it's currently, it's currently in negotiations. So we did bring this position forward as a possibility that it could happen with the bargaining unit for the maintenance division, currently, right now.
So at that point, it will make sense? Otherwise, it wouldn't go in the...
Exactly.
We'd have to approve that as part of the contract?
It would be, it's already in the contract. The only thing that's not in the contract is the name that we're calling it, because the way the contract's broken down, it's broken down into tradesmen, tradesman one, tradesman two, skilled tradesman one, skilled tradesman two. So this would be already, it's already a dollar amount or a position or a classification in the union as we speak.
But my concern is that if it's a labor position, it might not fit with the tradesman. Like, I'm just curious, why wouldn't we just create a position called labor, and then negotiate that along the way? We might be talking about the same thing, but it looks like you're bringing a job description that's not the one that was from tradesman before. You know what I mean?
We could change the classification.
Before it's a new job description, correct?
Well, we could, we could, I mean, it's a maintenance position. It would never be anything but a maintenance position. However, we could ask the union to change the classification from tradesman to laborer. The laborer is a term, is a, is a union term or a civil service term on the city side, the word laborer. On the school side, there are no laborers in the job descriptions. So on this side, they were called tradesmen, and that's the lowest paid classification in that contract. So again, it could be just a name change on that side. I would want the position to reflect the word laborer, because that's what it is.
Yeah, I don't disagree. What I'm suggesting, though, is, like, you're talking about the trades craftsmen, you know, moving up to this from the high school. I wholeheartedly support that. But we have people that are working for years that don't make as much money. So there has to be a step, you know? We don't want to offend somebody that's working, that's making almost the same amount of money, and somebody just out of high school gets, like, that's what I'm asking, is if that's been looked at.
I don't believe that we, I'm not trying to pigeonhole it for the craftsman laborer, for that, for the program. I'm just saying it's an opportunity. So if this position, if, and again, if there was no inside person or current employee of the district that would be looking for this job, then I would say we go to the construction craft laborers program and try and fill it. I wouldn't say that we would overlook someone or bypass anyone in that's currently employed. That was never the intent.
So what is the range, and how many steps are there in this?
It's one step. Everything within the, everything within the maintenance contract, along with the custodian contract, they're all one step. The person who walks in the door today makes as much as the twenty-five-year person.
So year one, they make X amount of dollars per hour. Year two, the same?
Year two would be whatever the increase is in the contract. So everyone's moving up at whatever percentage is in the contract. If it's a zero, then it's the same pay from year to year.
So if you're a junior custodian, you don't have four different steps? Year one, year two, year three, year four?
No. You walk in, and you're a junior custodian, and tomorrow, the next person walks in, and they're a junior custodian, and so on. The steps have disappeared.
Okay, I'm looking at the contract that I was reviewing today, and it talks about junior custodians, step one, step two, step three.
Right, but it's, but it's over a course of quite a few, it's not in the next year, it's two or three years later. Am I right?
I don't have that part, but it says in 2020, you know, you get a little bit of money for a senior. But, and the reason why I'm asking is because I think we need to look at this as an entry-level position, as you're describing it, as an entry-level laborer. And I don't want to have the situation happen where people are not making as much money relative to the work that they're doing, and all of a sudden, somebody's in this. So I just think it's an equity piece. I'm not trying to go against it. I think we should approve it. But I think we should look at talking with Attorney Assad through negotiations and figure out, make sure we're not, you know, unintentionally, that's all I'm asking. So I do support it. Thank you. I yield.
We'll definitely, I'll talk to Attorney Assad, and we will put this in play with the negotiate, within negotiations.
A roll call?
I need a motion.
I need a motion, a second, guys.
Motion.
A second.
I need a motion, a second.
Second.
Deb, please call the roll on the laborer's position.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rogics?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Next, twelve-thirteen is a discussion and vote to approve the facility school use as referred by Facilities and Operations Subcommittee and presented by Ken Pacico, chief operating officer.
So this particular matrix is, includes everything that we have that's rentable as of today. We don't have any of the new fields at Durfee in this mix. However, as they come into play, they would be put onto, onto this schedule. We also, with the approval of the policy on facilities, that has a minimum charge for turf fields, we think that this, these numbers would all work for the district, and also for those who are looking to use the facilities. And again, anyone who feels that they would like a break or discount on the fees would submit that to the superintendent, who would have final say on that particular piece, as it's outlined in the policy for facility use.
Any questions for Mr. Pacico on the use of facilities? Could I get a motion in a second?
Motion to accept?
Second.
I have a motion, and a second by Ms. Rogics. Discussion? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre? Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larve?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Yes.
Ms. Rogics?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Twelve-fourteen is a discussion and vote to approve to allow the administration to solicit bids for a five-year contract for the operation and management of the school for food service program.
Motion approved?
Second.
As referred by the Facilities and Operations Subcommittee and presented by Ken Pacico. I have a motion, a second. Any discussion on the opportunity to solicit bids?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Aguirre.
Can I please request that we have Witson come before the committee at the next meeting to talk about the state of affairs in the cafeteria?
For what? I didn't hear.
Well, he wants Witson to come to the next...
I'm gonna vote for this motion. I just want, I would just like them to present.
We have a motion in a second, and Mr. Aguirre's request is to get Witson to come down for the next meeting. Mr. Pacico, talk to us.
I'm sure we can. I, so this vote is basically to give me permission to go to a five-year contract.
Other companies, yeah.
So it's not, there's nothing being approved here.
Right.
The bidding process needs to happen. And then, the reason for the request is a five-year contract. It's a one-year contract with four one-year renewals. And this allows us to, from where I stand, make corrections, if we need to make corrections, with those one-year contracts. So someone, if we give them a three-year contract, it's much more difficult for us to maneuver, as opposed to a one-year contract with four one-year renewals. After that process, then we would go to our regular process of sending out the RFP, entertaining vendors, and so forth. There is no issue with asking Witson to come at the next meeting for discussion purposes. It doesn't, however...
Affect this.
Right. And what I would also need with this approval, I would also need to go to city council for a five-year contract. It's exactly the same request to the city council to approve a five-year contract.
Mr. Harp?
If, as far as getting which, the food service company here, would it be better if they were in the Facilities and Operations Subcommittee? Or is it meant for the food body?
I'm not quite sure what we're asking.
Is that what Mr. Aguirre said?
So I wasn't sure what... So I wasn't sure what Ms. Aguirre's request was. If it's a state of affairs...
Oh, okay.
If it's just a request for them to give us...
An update.
You know, an update, then I think we could do it as a committee of a whole. But if there's anything in particular that we want them to prepare for, then maybe facilities.
All right. So we'll get Witson's to the next meeting. Anything further to discuss on just the solicitation for bids for the food service? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 1215 is a discussion and vote to approve to allow the administration, same thing, to solicit bids for a five-year contract for HVAC Maintenance and Control Support Services as referred by the Facilities and Operations Subcommittee and presented by Ken Pacheco, Chief Operating Officer. Same thing?
Motion to approve.
Second.
So it's exactly the same thing for a different service. It's a one-year contract with four one-year renewals.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on the solicitation of bids? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 1216 is a discussion and vote to approve the spending of $1.4 million appropriation as presented by Maria Potts, Superintendent of Schools.
So what you have is, on April 12th, the City Council appropriated for us the $1.427230 money to fulfill its net school spending requirement. With this $1.4 million, we are still owed $871,151 in order for the city to... For us to be at 100% net school spending. Our recommendation is that we use this $1,427,230 to offset the cost of the athletic fields at Durfee High School.
Can I get a motion?
Move with the superintendent's recommendation.
Motion to approve.
I have a motion.
Second.
And if I...
Mr. Aguirre made the motion. Mr. Harp seconded it.
Oh, did he hear that? Okay.
Any further discussion?
Could I just add something?
Question.
Mr. Almeida.
Thanks. So I just wanted to add that with that... So the plan, so that everybody knows, so the City Council has the transfer for $871,000 in front of them for tomorrow night. And the plan is going to be to use the $871,000 towards the athletic fields. So you know going into it that that is the plan moving forward, so thank you.
There goes zero. So we have a motion in a second.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Aguirre?
Mr. Almeida, when did we learn about this 2.2 million? What date was it?
So it happened... It was, I believe it was right around...
March 3rd?
Right around February vacation, we got the letter. So we started working with the city very shortly thereafter. And the appropriation went through right after our April school committee meeting is when it went through. And so it... I know we're kind of... You know, if we almost made the timing for the April meeting, we just missed it. So that's why we're requesting the approval tonight.
I'm just wondering, why is it separate? That's... That would be...
I'm sorry?
Maybe for the city?
I didn't hear that last comment, Mr. Aguirre. Sorry.
It says they didn't fulfill its budgeted net school spending by 2.2 million.
Yep.
In the letter.
Yep.
So why don't we get... Why didn't we just get 2.2 million?
Because I... The one they...
Why are we waiting on 871?
Because they identified the funding for the $1.4 million, and we're still researching the $870,000, where they want to come up with it.
And now that's all done? So now that's on the council's agenda?
It's on the agenda for tomorrow night. Yes, sir.
So I would like to make an amendment to the motion to say that we're going to spend 2.298381 on the athletic fields. As Mr. Almeida just indicated, that was the...
As long as the appropriation is approved tomorrow night.
Well, we can just say... Can we just say pending approval tomorrow night?
Yeah.
Okay. That's fine. Mr. Aguirre's new motion is the amended motion for the 2.2, whatever the changes after that. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on both groups of funds going to the fields? Hearing none. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 1217 is a discussion and vote to approve transfer as presented by Kevin Almeida, our Chief Financial Officer.
So this is just a regular transfer. We'll be coming back with another one, I'm sure, in June. And our final transfer, we are transferring $160,000 into classroom supplies and $19,000 into the water sewer account.
So we have two numbers, 19 and 160, transferring. Any discussion on those transfers? I'm looking for a motion in a second.
One question, sir?
Oh, yeah, of course. Let's see if anybody motions in seconds.
I'll make a motion to approve with a question.
I have a motion from Mr. Aguirre. Can I get a second before Mr. Aguirre's question? I have a motion, a second for Ms. Roderick's. Mr. Aguirre?
Could we please get a one-pager or a span of information related to the preventative maintenance, having the surplus from the superintendent for next week?
Yes.
All set?
Thank you.
Anything further? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 1218 is a discussion and vote to approve a year-to-date budget report as presented by Kevin Almeida, our Chief Financial Officer.
So this is the report. As of April 30th, we've spent 75% to date. We are on target to meet our budget for the end of the year. The... As of this time, the insurance, we're projecting about a $300,000 surplus at this time, but it's subject to change. And that's where we are with the update for this month.
Can we...
Motion to...
Question?
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second, and then I'll go to Mr. Aguirre? Can I get a second?
Second.
Second.
Bobby or Ms. Roderick both seconded, and Mr. Aguirre?
So, Mr. Almeida, the health care?
Yes.
For several years now, since 2018, I've been advocating that school lunch program pay for the health care?
Yes.
Out of the nutrition account. You know how often, how much that is? I don't have it in front of me.
I don't have... I don't know exactly how much it was the last time I had calculated it. It was some... It was just over $300,000 per year. But it's all dependent on who has health care within the school lunch account, and that changes every year. So I think the last time I did it was probably about two years ago.
Can I please request to the superintendent that for the next meeting, we have an agenda item related to making that department self-sufficient? Reason why I say that is if that's a $300,000 expense, that we're going to reimburse that $300,000, the $300,000 that we've got a surplus in the health care is going to be now $600,000. And I'd like that at the next meeting, so that before we close our books, we know exactly what we have.
Sure.
It's just a simple request, no motions or anything, and I do support this. Thank you, sir.
I have a motion in a second. Anything further? Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey? Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. 13 is obviously informational, retirements, resignations. I'm looking for...
Motion to accept and place on file, 13.1, 13.2, 13.3 appointments.
Can I get a second on those?
Second.
Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Ms. Roderick? Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Any new business to come before the committee tonight?
A motion to accept and place on file, 13.4.
Oh, we left one off, I'm sorry. So we have to do one more, 13.4. I have a motion, need a second on the last piece.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Deb, please call the roll.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes.
Ms. Larrabee?
Yes.
Ms. Pereira?
Ms. Roderick?
Yes.
Mayor Coogan?
Yes. Any new business to come before the committee tonight?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Aguirre?
Mr. Chairman? Just a question. I was reviewing the facilities meeting, and I don't know if I missed it as part of this agenda, not being there. Is there something about use of the school for a carnival, laterno school?
Oh, actually, that was...
I believe it went to the Subcommittee, and I didn't know if that was on here.
No, you're right, Mr. Aguirre. That was on the agenda. We did talk about that at the Facilities and Operation, but they have withdrawn their request. That's been canceled. They're going to do something during the school.
I see. Thank you very much.
15, is there a request for executive session?
There would be a need.
Can I get a motion in a second to enter into it?
Motion's made.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Mr. Assad, please read why.
Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A7, to review and approve the executive session minutes for April 11, 2022, regular school committee meeting. Also, Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 281, to review the open meeting law complaint dated April 11, 2022, filed by Patrick Higgins regarding April 11, 2022, and approving minutes for February 14, 2022, March 1, 2022, March 7, 2022, March 8, 2022, March 9, 2022, and March 14, 2022, in a timely manner. Mr. Higgins alleges the school committee did not approve the minutes in a timely manner. Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all cafeteria employees, forward school system represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council 93, Local 1118, as the chairs determine, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all maintenance employees of the forward school system represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council 93, Local 1118, as the chairs determine, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all custodial employees of the forward school system represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council 93, Local 1118, as the chairs determine, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all safety, security employees, the forward school system represented by the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Council 93, Local 1118, as the chairs determine, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all professional teaching employees of the forward school system, including coaches, title-one teachers, nurses, occupational physical therapists, and specialists in the teaching profession, represented by the Forward Educated Association, as the chairs determine, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all administrators and employees represented by the Forward Administrators Association, as the chairs determine, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all paraprofessional employees of the forward school system, represented by the Forward Federation of Professional, as the chairs determine, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining relative to all civil clerical employees of the forward school system represented by the Forward Department of Civil Service Clerical Employees, as the chairs determine, an open session may have a detrimental impact on the bargaining position of the committee. Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions, preparation